We're good.
Yep.
All right, well, I officially call this meeting to order. This is the regular school board meeting Monday, December 21st, 2020. This is virtual live stream via Zoom. Because of COVID and also we wanted to make sure that as much of the public that wanted to watch this meeting could. And we have some who will participate as well. It's a very long agenda. There's lots for us to do. Some of which is is regular business for this time of year, but we all need to get it done as well as the the extra COVID discussion and operational plans, learning plans. So we tried to adjust this agenda. It's a little wonky, but we did it with the idea that people were going to be watching and participating. And we didn't want them to have to sit through two hours of meeting that they weren't part of at first. Or if they have the ability to, you know, work with their part and then leave, we wanted to accommodate that too. So that is why the agenda is a little bit different than normal. But if there would be anyone who would offer to adopt the agenda. Love that motion.
So moved Carlson.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second, as is our practice with virtual meetings and required by law. We will do a resolution type vote where we all go through. So John.
Carlson, I.
Bill.
Soderland, I.
Tracy.
Stewie, I.
Vicki.
Hager, I.
Tim.
Lucas Card, I.
Drew.
Dixon, I.
Leonard, I. Motion carries. That's known as a roll call vote, but nine months into the pandemic, I have lost 75% of my language skills. So we'll move on to truth and taxation presentation. Superintendent Soderland or Grandseth? Different.
Superintendent Soderland, wrong bill. Thank you. This is a truth and taxation presentation. It is one of the annual required reports that we provide with our taxpayers. And I know that CFO Regner has been working hard on this for quite a while. And this is considered the the Super Bowl of education finance. Because we have the truth and taxation, we're setting the levy, we're going through the audit. So this is Mr. Regner's big hour as the star quarterback on Super Bowl finance night. So I'll let Tim take it away.
Well, thank you, Bill. That's an exciting night as always in December for us. I'll try and be really brief this year because I know the agenda is really long and we've went through this stuff. Probably a few times at Finance Committee. In the packet, there's about a four page presentation on basically the levy. And what this is entitled to is that we present the taxation and give the taxpayers a chance to talk. If anybody has questions about the levy later tonight, we'll go back and revisit it and approve it for formally approve it. But this is the chance to ask questions. And I kind of try and give just a little bit of an overview. On the first page, it just talks a little bit about the total amounts of levy. This year it's 6,797,000. It's up just slightly from last year when it was 6.4 million for about $157,000 increase. If you flip over to page two, we tried to give just a little bit of history on, you know, where the levees been in the last few years, the last 10 years. I mean, see the last four or five years, it's been pretty steady. It took one big jump up in between 14 and 15, and that was obviously due to the passing of the bond to build a new school. You know, the four years before that, it was pretty, pretty level. And then it jumped up and it's increased just a little bit during the last five or six years. Up on the top of that, try to give like a dollar change from the previous years. And what were some of the major or the reasons that it changed, however it did? This year, there's probably just a few minor things, four or five that that went up slightly. Our LTFM program, the debt service, we had a few more students. So the referendum dollars go up, that that really caused the LTFM to go up too, because it's based upon students. Then career tech, we've been adding a lot of classes at the high school and the technical aspects. And the levy helps you pay for parts of those. And then the last one is reemployment. We did increase that a little bit this year. That was mainly due to the pandemic. Typically, we don't have much unemployment costs, or we haven't since I've been here. This year with everything that goes on, we're probably going to have some next year. So we put in $20,000 or $25,000 for that. We raised it up from 10. So those those small increases in a few different areas resulted in the levy going up $157,000. As we talked before, we flip over to the the third page. Basically, the levy is is kind of a combination of, I don't know, we got 20, 25 different categories that make up the the total levy. And we try to do there is just give a history of the last four years of what each of the levies been. And then the change from last year to this year. And as you can see in column, I believe it's column I there, that's a difference. You know, a few things went up, you know, 20, $30,000. And a lot of that's because our enrollment's been going up and the levy is based upon the number of students you have in each in each class. So you can see if you go down to the bottom, like, you know, I'm gonna try and be fairly quick here. Last year, we had a $6.6 million levy, this year it's 6.7. So the actually increase, a lot of people always look at that on their taxes, was 2.37%. So it's relatively a smaller increase this year at 2%. Your individual taxes vary. There probably isn't anybody that their tax, their school portion went up exactly 2.37%. Because that's the overall number, your individual house, farm, business will vary upon how your value changed in rel- in relation to everybody else's. So if you like did an addition to your house, it probably went up a little bit more than that. I think this year, some of the farmland maybe decreased a little bit in value. So probably the levy went down a little bit. So everybody should be in that range of 2%, 2 to 3%, but some may be slightly higher, some slightly lower, just depending upon their individual situation. So and then the last page, we're also required to give our, at the truth and taxation meeting. And that is a copy of the budget that was adopted by the board back in May for this coming year. Or it was actually probably the June meeting, we did it in May, it was adopted budget for 2021, which outlined or gave us the ability to to pay some of the bills come July. So that's basically just an outline of that, that we went over pretty thoroughly back in June, if you remember, for the year. We did talk about this at the Finance Committee on the levy. And I guess that's kind of the short presentation that I have tonight. And I'll leave it open if there's any questions or anything at this time for me or Mr. Grandseth.
Any questions from the board? We did go over this including the audit pretty thoroughly in the Finance Committee meeting earlier in the week. Superintendent Grandseth, we did not have any request to speak towards the truth and taxation, did we?
No, we did not.
Excellent. Thank you. As was mentioned by Mr. Regner, thank you very much for your thorough presentation. We'll be voting on this later in the agenda. But that truth and taxation presentation is something that we do every year if we if we see a tax increase. And so wanted to do that. Let's move on to student spotlight. We have a student council report.
Yes.
Hi Mia.
Hi. Thank you again for having me. I was asked to speak a little bit on the student perspective and on how things are going to lately. And I asked some of my classmates to give some feedback on how things are going. Most of us said that we're doing relatively well, especially since, you know, we're getting more of the hang of things. Since we already, you know, been doing it for a while. Now that we're all getting the hang of things, some things that we've noticed that are getting hard with distant learning is how like repetitive it can get kind of. It's really appreciated when teachers try to mix things up and, you know, do things a little bit differently. I know some teachers have, you know, done some cahoots and I think it's called like pair decks or like fun little different ways of presenting them material during the Google meets. I've also heard from many people that it's super, super nice when teachers like check in to see how we're doing. And, you know, notice when we're struggling a little bit. I know Ms. A during one of our meets noticed that we were not doing so hot. And we all look kind of tired. So she recognized that, worked with us and reached out and made sure that, you know, we were learning everything properly and we're getting all the material. And was making sure our stress levels were at a appropriate level, which was super nice. Another thing that I've heard is that it can be really confusing when teachers don't stick to the AB schedule during those online days. I know personally, I've missed some of the mandatory meetings because they were on an off day. And, you know, I wasn't, I didn't log in. So it's nice when teachers release a weekly schedule on a Sunday or a Monday. So I know if I do have a mandatory meeting on one of those off days, I know when to log on. With that, thank you to the teachers. I know it's hard to adapt to the weird situation that we have going on. And keep reaching out to the students. We care about what you have to say and it's nice to know when you care. And we also really appreciate the creativity. I'm currently in culinary arts and it's hard when you're not actually in the kitchen. But Mrs. Blue is doing a really good job of, you know, doing the virtual cooking. So we are kind of in the kitchen, even though we aren't at school. And lastly, now that we're heading into winter break, on behalf of the students and the senior classes, the staff, please be safe, try to wear your mask and do whatever you can so we can have sports and get back to school so that we can have what's left of our senior year.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mia. Questions from the board?
This is Tracy Stewie. I don't so much have a question as me. I don't know you personally, but you sure seem to have a good handle on being organized and on top of things. And I think a lot of students should learn from you because that's a great skill to have when you go off to college. So I was very impressed that you wanted to see a schedule at the beginning of the week. I hate to say, but I think you might be in the minority, but don't feel bad about that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your willingness to share your concerns and thoughts and and work with your fellow students as well to do that. That means a lot. The student of the month has been paused during distance learning. So I think that that brings us to the COVID data and learning model presentation. We will hear from some folks who signed up to speak to this part of the agenda afterwards. And we'll go over that in a minute. But I wanted us to hear the presentation first because I thought a lot of the questions could potentially be answered by this presentation. And at the very least, that would give us a lot more information. So really, the order is going to be, we're going to hear the presentation now. If we do have one or two questions directly about the presentation that would benefit from being answered right away, I think that that's great. We'll then hear from those who requested to speak on this agenda item. And then we'll kind of go back into our regular flow and we will pick up this discussion later on in the action items. So it's a little bit, I wouldn't say disjointed, but it's a little compartmentalized as we move through the discussions. And I just wanted to make that clear. Superintendent Grandseth?
Thank you, Chair Leonard. Yes, it, we are doing things a little out of our usual order. But with so much interest in this topic, it seemed reasonable to give out information before we before we had those discussions. So first of all, it's first time presenting on Zoom. Can you, you can see the presentation? Good. Thank you. We have had some change in guidance and it was, it came out December 16th. So we haven't had it for very long. But both Executive Order 2103 from Governor Walz and the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan have updates. And today, there were more updates to the Safe Learning Plan. So we had to make a few adjustments. I know the board members had the presentation since last Friday. And there have been a few adjustments based on the changes that were made today. So there's far too many details for us to get into. And quite honestly, you don't need to know all of the details, but I want to share some of the big ideas. One is the increased focus on in-person learning for elementary age students. They really want to see our younger students back, much like many of us do. And so they're not focusing quite so much on the county level COVID 14 day rate at the elementary level. That is still impacting our middle and high schools and our Hoffman Learning Center. They are still continuing to look at that county level data. The reasons they gave for that are really how COVID-19 is affecting and reacting with the younger students versus older students. With middle and high school students, they're seeing it follow more closely to what it does with adults. And with younger children, they're not seeing it pass quite so much. So that's why they're saying that they're more willing to have the elementary age students in person before our middle and high school students. Regarding athletic practices and activities, those would be allowed to start practices on July, on July. I hope it's not July, January 4th. They don't, they haven't come out with any schedule for competitions or any guidance regarding games or spectators or anything like that. But we expect that to come out soon. We assume that that wouldn't be until at least mid-January. January 18th is the date that the state provided for many schools to even start considering coming in. Because our district had said that on January 4th, we were going to consider making changes. We're able to have some earlier dates, which I'll get into in just a bit. I do want to assure everyone that that prefers distance learning, that that will continue to be an option for anyone who prefers it. There are several requirements. First of all, we are required to follow the state guidance. We have to follow the Safe Learning Plan. There is a larger role now for the regional support team. Anytime we are considering a change in learning model, we are required to have a consultation with them. And they need to approve any plan that we have. And we have to provide at least two days of planning for our teachers before a learning model change. So you'll see that in our in our recommendations as well. As far as PPE, there is an increased requirement for staff to wear both a mask and a shield at all times when they're working with students. And the state is providing more masks and more shields. They're sending those to the to the collaborative and we pick them up there. Regarding quarantines, that is pretty much the same as it has been. MDH defines what a close contact is and helps to do the the contact tracing like they have been. They highly recommend that we continue a 14 day quarantine in a school setting. And I know that we've all heard a lot about changing guidelines with the quarantines. However, those have had a lot of restrictions put on it as well. So if it's someone in your family who has a positive case, it's 14 days. If you can't stay at least six feet away from people when you're returning, you have to stay to the 14 days. And given a school setting, it's just highly recommended that we stay with 14 days. And so that would be our recommendation. Along with that, when we get to the point that we are all in, we call it all in when all of the students are there every day at the elementary level. It is likely that if we have a positive case in a classroom, that the entire class would need to quarantine because they would all be considered close contacts through that process. And on the bus, if a student is on the bus for more than 30 minutes with a positive case, then whoever's on that bus for at least 30 minutes with that positive case would be considered a close contact. So that's another area that we might see more quarantines originating from. And then there is also a requirement that all students have an assigned seat on the bus. We've been working closely with Saints Bus on plans for these transitions. And they would have student names posted above each seat for students to be riding in the same spot every day. That is to allow us to do contact tracing. And so it's important that students are in the same seat every time they're on the bus. And then early learning in elementaries are to stay in their classrooms. There are some exceptions to this and we're working through those exceptions. That's one of the pieces that came out as clarification today. Originally, they had just put a blanket statement that elementary students are to stay in their classroom throughout the day except for recess and PE. And now they've loosened up those restrictions a bit, saying if you can maintain that six foot distance in your cafeteria or in your art or music rooms, that you would be allowed to use those spaces. So we're looking into those spaces, looking into some furniture possibilities to to determine what that will look like. With the COVID data still being tied to the middle and high school, I wanted to share the most current information that I had. And for Niccolat County officially right now, and keep in mind that that's two weeks behind where current times. So it's 96.7, that is the official number for Niccolat County. And 64.2 is where we are currently, or we were on Sunday anyway, yesterday. Listor County is at 114 and 88.3 for a current number. We do have some students from Blue Earth County. We don't typically include this information, but I thought it would be good to include it here. And 99.82 is their official number with a 67 for their current number. And currently, we have two positive cases and six quarantines. I think this was updated today to be one case and four quarantines. So it's getting a little better, but I do want to point out that with these numbers for our school community, we are only able to include what is reported to us. And so if we have families who are in quarantine or have had some exposure to a positive case and they haven't let us know that, that's not included here. So it is really important for families to continue to share that information with us as we're making these decisions about about coming back. So now we get to the the recommendations for our learning models. And these, this has been shared, as I said, in consultation with the Regional Support Center. And we have received approval. What you see here is a little bit different from what we initially went to the group with. They had some suggestions for us, and so we did some tweaking and went back and got approval with this plan. So early learning, that's our our preschool classes would continue in distance learning for that first week. The reasoning being the regional center really wanted to see two weeks from that holiday season where people are likely to be be gathering or have exposure to more than just their own household. And our our smallest learners, children under five, aren't required to wear masks. And so staff would have more exposure with our students when they're helping them in the washroom or helping them at food times or during other times during the day. They just have closer contact. And so we've held them off with another week. And then on January 7th and 8th, that would be their teacher planning days. And then January 11th, they would begin in-person learning. So that's all students every day. That's not a change from what they were doing before. This was considered hybrid because we have broken them into smaller class sizes. But it is all students attending every day. And then for North and South Elementaries, we would continue. Well, on January 4th and 5th, we would have teacher planning days. That's those two days that are required. And then on January 6th, we would start with hybrid learning. They would do that for, I guess, about a week and a half. And then we would have two more days of teacher planning. The January 14th and 15th, the 18th is a teacher records day. It's the end of the quarter. And so on January 19th, they would begin in-person learning. That's all students attending every day. The middle and high schools and Hoffman Learning Center, as I mentioned, are still dependent on county 14 day rates. So the dates that you see here are really estimated dates of return. So on January 4th, they would continue with distance learning. We are hoping that on January 7th and 8th, our teachers would have their planning days. And then they would all begin hybrid learning on January 11th. I want to say again, this is dependent on the COVID rates and the approval of the regional support team. So we hope that those are the dates, but we may have to push that off if the numbers don't indicate that we can come back. And then we are, we are likely a little ways off of having all of our middle and high school students in person. But we are very hopeful that that would happen sometime in February if the numbers continue to decline. It's also in February that we are starting to schedule vaccinations for our staff. So all of this information will work together to determine when we would be able to bring our middle and high school students back full time. In the recommendations, I'm also asking for the authorization to shift to a more restrictive learning model as necessary due to staffing levels, or if the regional support team or MDH or MDE direct me to do so. I would hope not to do this, but if we get to a point where we don't have enough staff due to positive cases or quarantines, I may have to shift models quickly to react to that. My hope would always be to share with the school board before something happens. But what we've learned is that we can't always predict when when staff is going to be out. I know that when we went into distance learning this time, there were, there were quite a few days when our principals were subbing and we were pulling everybody that we could to make sure that we had coverage for our classrooms. And we, we don't want to be to the point where we're just providing coverage. We want to provide rich learning experiences for our students, whether they are in-person, hybrid or on distance learning. And when we get to that point where we're stretching ourselves so thin, we're not as able to do that. So I'm hoping for the authorization to be able to shift as needed to more restrictive learning models. So this is a very colorful graph. Thank you, Mr. Overbow, for creating it. It's just the same information in picture form. Because sometimes pictures are easier to It's just the same information in picture form because sometimes pictures are easier to, to understand than all of the words. The areas in the light green are dependent on local COVID data. So those shifts that we see to in-person learning for early childhood and our elementary schools, we, we feel pretty good about being able to do that. But if we get close to those dates and we don't have enough staff to operate or the numbers are climbing too quickly, then we'll have to think about that again. But we are very hopeful that this would be our timeline for elementary. And again, as I said, anything in the yellow is dependent on regional support team approval and the county COVID numbers. So we'll continue to watch those numbers. And hopefully, we'll be able to shift into hybrid learning at that date. But again, it's dependent on the data. Along the way, we have met with our teachers' union leadership, and we've met with paraprofessionals' leadership. We've spoken to some parents, and we thought we would share some of the questions that came up quite often to be able to maybe answer some questions that people had. One, are these dates solid? And I hope that you heard during my presentation that the answer is not necessarily. It, it is as solid as anything else is in this pandemic. I think we have certainly become accustomed to adjusting our plans. But we would hope that those dates are as close as that we can get. But we do have to respond if the numbers don't allow us to to go forward. Well, Saints overtime continue. It will continue while we're in hybrid learning, just like before when we're in hybrid. When the elementary transitions to in-person, of course, we wouldn't have a need for Saints overtime during the day, but it would continue before and after school as it traditionally has. But it would continue to be available for middle school students twelve and under while they're in the hybrid model until they were able to come back in person. Will it, will distance learning still be available for any families who choose it? Yes, and our schools will be working to confirm that people want to continue distance learning. Or if there are additional families who are interested in distance learning rather than coming back, we will be looking for that information, and you'll, you'll be getting that directly from the schools. And then what are accommodations for staff who might be at high risk? And all along, we have had accommodations available to staff. It is different for every person depending on their situation. And so they will continue to work through human resources to arrange for accommodations or leave some absence as, as appropriate. If we have our students in person, it's very difficult for a teacher to work from home if their students are in person. And so that, that accommodation is generally some kind of leave. There are special circumstances and special programs that we can work with, and we want to make sure that we're meeting everyone's needs. So with that, I will take questions from the board members. As Chair Leonard said earlier, that your discussion among yourselves will be later on in the action agenda. But this is a time to ask me any questions, and certainly I'll answer questions later, too.
Thank you Superintendent Ron Seth. I'd just like to add that the state issued their guidance on Wednesday. So this is five days later, including today, including the weekend. And I really appreciate the work that you've put into this, that administrative team members have put into this. Jody, you and others with the regional team, you know, working with a lot of districts, and Jody, you too, several districts in our county. So thank you for, for all of the hard work and thorough planning. I think we've said throughout this pandemic that we want to be a district that follows state guidance and rules and mandates. And I think that this plan reflects, reflects that. So we do have several people who signed up ahead of time to speak to this agenda item. And we'll go through the list. I will call on them individually in the order that I have them. If you want to speak for one or two minutes, we'll let everyone speak. We'll just listen. We'll go through each and every person. So I asked that, we don't ask questions directly of the speakers. We just listen to them. So everybody gets a chance. And then I'm sure we can incorporate their comments into the discussion later. And I would tell everyone out there listening, if you do have a question, a general question or a specific question about your child, please reach out to your building principal, your teacher, Superintendent Ron Seth. Happy to answer those questions through the COVID email or through direct communication. Excellent. With that, I will call on Carrie Shealy.
Yes, hi. I would like to speak today as supportive school of making a phobia opening as soon as possible. It is time to stop living in fear and instead to live with courage. In November, the CDC director stated, "The truth is, for kids K through twelve, one of the safest places they can be from our perspective is to remain in school. Distance learning, even in its best programming, has caused our children to fall behind academically. We owe it to our kids and our communities to give them the best education possible. How long will we continue to let them slide? Many sources say students have lost months of learning with many of those who are already behind, falling even farther behind. Yes, COVID-19 is a dangerous disease. With mitigation efforts, kids can remain in school. I know some others will disagree, and I respect that. The only thing I can do is state how I feel. I ask school leaders to consider the many detriments our children are facing as a result of school closures, not only academically, but also social and emotional struggles. If phobia opening is not possible, I encourage you to implement live learning five days a week. I know all teachers are doing the very best they can in this current learning environment, and I commend them for their efforts. There is so much more known about this disease than what was known back in March. Treatments are better and vaccines are, will soon begin rolling out. It's time to move forward without undue fear. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight."
Thank you very much, Carrie. We will move on to our next speaker, Ila Gassman.
Hi, I'm Ila Gassman. I'm a sixth grader at the St. Peter Middle School. I think we should keep doing distance learning. I believe this because distance learning is working well, and we should just be safe before we take any more risk, risk of any more cases. Some people say that it's harder for them in distance learning, but our teachers can help you. They can have, they have so many great opportunities for you to get help. And frankly, they are doing an excellent job in the serious time. They are always there for the Google meets, which everyone should be attending. They are always open for questions while you're in those meets. But if you still don't understand, then you can go to your office hours, which are available every single day with every teacher. If we went back to hybrid learning right now, our teachers are still in risk of catching COVID-19. If they did catch the coronavirus, then they would have to stay home, and then they would need a sub who would also be in risk. And this could just keep going on and on. So we shouldn't, so we should just wait to go back to school because in my opinion, one person is too much to risk. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ila. Our next speaker is Eva.
Good evening, faculty, students, families, and members of board. My name is Eva Crock, and I'm a junior here at St. Peter High School. And tonight, I wanted to share with you the reservations I have in returning to an in-person setting for learning in the coming semester. I'm going to start this evening by sharing with you a story about a friend of mine named Hamdi Abdi. Hamdi is a bright and confident young woman who formerly attended St. Peter High School. Earlier this year in August, Hamdi's family was shaken poor when her father was diagnosed with COVID-19. Due to the pre-existing liver and blood pressure complications, the disease hit him very hard. He was quickly hospitalized as his condition continued to worsen. A mere fourteen days after contracting the disease, her father passed away with no one, alone in a hospital room because the dangerously infectious nature of this disease did not allow for her family or her to be visited as he passed. Her family was left stunned and devastated. Her mother, heartbroken by not only losing the father to her children, but also Hamdi wrote to me, her best friend and the only one she could truly count on. We are here, here, we are here tonight to discuss returning to an in-person learning setting. Once again, while the pandemic that took Hamdi's father from her continues to bring devastation to households across the state, country, and world at large. Some individuals would have you believe that this pandemic is a political discussion. Let me be clear with you all tonight. It is not. This disease that kept Hamdi's father from being able to see her sister's wedding does not care what political party you believe in. This disease that left her mother to take care of her and her twelve brothers and sisters does not discriminate between those who believe in it and those who do not. This disease is ruthless, and this disease is dangerous. It is not only a threat on a global scale, but also a threat to each and every household near and dear to each of our hearts. To propose that we as students return to class as normal is not only reckless and potentially harmful, but also blatantly insensitive to the pain that this disease has caused members of our own school community. And so I ask of you tonight, as you cast your votes, to please consider carefully the ramifications of your decision. And I truly hope Hamdi's story stays with you as it has stayed with me. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you this evening.
Thank you very much, Eva. Our next speaker is Bill Webber.
Good evening. So I'm speaking on behalf of my, my children and several of my friends. And we are passionate about the quality of their education. That's why we chose to live in St. Peter. And we, we really, really, really need to get our kids back in school. Everyone has the option to, to distance learn. And I really feel, I just don't understand the difference between a fourth grader have, being able to come back to school full-time and a fifth grader or a sixth grader. These kids need to be in school. They need to be interacting with their friends and their teachers. I mean, this distance learning, I know the teachers are doing the best they can. And we have great teachers in our district. But, I mean, my kids are done by noon every day. And, and then I don't, you know, they're playing video games or reading books or whatever. I mean, these kids are not getting what they need this year. And I, and I plead that you get them back as soon as possible. And, and also, I just want to state that I'm not, I'm not in favor of the superintendent having the power to make decisions without the board's approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Our next speaker tonight, April. April Waller. All right, I will return to April at the end, but we will move on to Mark. Mark Zabinski, I think I can see you. So you're still muted, but go ahead.
You, you, you said it correctly. Yes. All right. Well, good evening. My name is Mark Zabinski. I have two students in St. Peter schools, and I want to speak to the lack of face-to-face teacher contact from my first grader at South Elementary. Three hours a week. That's, as Superintendent Grunseth was saying, rich learning. Raz Kids, Lexia, IXL, C-Saw apps. They're anywhere from fifty, sixty, and ninety minutes a day, five to ten hours a week. More face time with the iPad. And again, with our teacher, three hours a week. I just find that's a disgrace. Hybrid models were purposeful in the fall, but transitioning to the higher, to the distance learning that we have had should have included full day, or at least not full day, but full classes altogether, four days a week. My middle schooler, my middle schooler gets two plus hours a day, five days a week with their teachers, his teachers. And I think that's wonderful. That's been a great thing. But South, three days a week. Now, I am not trying to insult Mrs. Oki. I adore her. But from speaking with her, I realized there's an importance for small groups. I realized there are logistical challenges to trying to schedule specialists, parent schedule, parent schedules, and their demands of Saints overtime. There's lots of pieces. But with all the planning in the fall, with the November day, every Friday, when we finally made the trend in the distance learning, three hours a week, I just am appalled. And that, to me, is something that is not better than last spring. That is not rich education. I realize schools made their plans, but you, the school board, signed off on it. Please push your schools to increase teacher content, especially if we go back to distance learning. The kids deserve it. And I have to say, knowing that other schools that my wife and I are involved with offer more, you need to demand more from these schools. They are quality people, quality teachers, and our kids deserve that. But if we have barriers that they are fighting through, you need to help them work through it. Three hours a week is not worth it. And with that, that time needs to be engaging with teacher instruction, developing relationships, and that's not happening. Especially with such limited time. My son adores his teacher, but again, we have such limited time. With Governor Walz pointedly bringing up the importance of having elementary kids in school is wonderful. I'm asking you, don't shy away from it. Push for it. Make it a reality. I look forward to that nineteenth, when the kids can go back full-time. But I need to send one last message. When we transition to this full, in all-person, please do it with gusto, but be prepared. And that's why I want to stress, be prepared to adjust to a better distance learning model if it has to go that way, because our kids deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Cindy, you're next. Are you ready?
Yep. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me. My name is Cindy Weibusch. My husband and I have three daughters. Two are graduated, and one is a current junior. I'll be try, I'll try to be concise here with three main points. First, I want to take responsibility for not engaging in school board decision-making enough in the past. Many community members share in this neglect. It is easy to let things roll along until the tough times. You as administration and board are now being highly scrutinized. So to that end, thank you for your resilience and persistence in doing what you are called to do. We as a community will do better to engage and support. So number two, I would like to ask you to do better as well. I am encouraged by your plans, Superintendent Ron Seth. In a November twelve email to you and board members, I asserted, quote, "Much of decision-making is in respecting the people in the process. Working together to analyze a situation, be open to options, and determining how we can come together and solve challenges is a valuable lesson that we can model and share with our students. Let's do better for our students, staff, coaches, and school personnel." So I recently sat down with my student, who was contextualizing and synthesizing seven documents for APUS history. As we discussed what she was trying to do, the parallel struck me. We ask our students to go beyond what is set in front of them and use higher-level thinking to come to a holistic point of view, to consider what they know and what they are learning, and create conclusions. As a board and administration, you are asked to do this. In this situation, work with the regional team to use not only MDH data, MDE guidelines, but use St. Peter School data, community data, student, parent, and staff survey reports. Consider all anecdotal data such that it is a perception, an insight, a piece of unqualified evidence. Please do not just use what completes the specific narrative of the most vocal. So number three is my anecdotal information. I speak for people who want both a safe and holistic approach to a return to school. If a decision is just as simple as the MDH fourteen-day number, a severe real gate to pass through, there is no discussion here. This is all a moot point. Similarly, if the board's role is only to approve the superintendent's proposals, again, there is Similarly, if the board's role is only to approve the superintendent's proposals, again, there is no purpose here or any discussion to be had. But if the board wants to say, it can be better, let's try again. That's the purpose of this system of checks and balances. Governor Walz recognizes the whole student, let's hear at St. Peter recognize that too. That school for most kids is what defines their lives from age five to eighteen. We know that students are struggling in a multitude of ways. More than anything, they feel disconnected, unmotivated and out of any control right now. One may choose to distance learn, but no one can choose to go to school and engage in all that the school community provides. So quickly in conclusion, one, thank you, you will continue to hear from your community. Two, let's do better. A one-size-fits-all depends-on-a-number approach is misguided. Facilitate, discuss, contextualize, synthesize, together be an educated example. And three, please take a holistic approach. There are individuals that will not be encouraged by anything I just said, but to the, those of you who question, who research, who process and are thinking beyond given constraints to give guidance, I empower you to do so. And thank you for considering all the parts that make the greater whole decision to get teachers and kids back in school safely. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Cindy. I want to take this opportunity to go back to April, April Waller. Not sure if you're, you're in here. I'll try one more time, but can we go to the second to last speaker tonight, Rita Rossbach?
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Rita Rossbach and I have children in both middle school and high school. Uh, my high schooler was a distance learner and my middle school was a hybrid student. I'm in a unique situation because my husband is a physician who is working in urgent care for Mayo Health System in Mankato. From March to about this summer, his, his clinic alone was set aside to work with potential COVID patients. Um, my concern is that our numbers in our community are still, though they might be going down, um, I think people need to be aware that five clinics have closed temporarily since December seventh and will be closed until mid-January to accommodate the surge of COVID patients and the need for staff to cover at the Mankato Hospital. Respiratory care has been at capacity and I believe in November, the hospital was at capacity. This not only affects the five clinics and their communities, but it also affects our community as well. Um, staff coverage has been maxed and hospitals and healthcare professionals are also getting affected by COVID. Um, I believe that our teachers and our school staff are doing the best they can during this pandemic. Our children are learning not only from their classes, but they are learning how to adapt to a very novel situation for which we were all unprepared. And that means the world. They're learning about how a virus can affect the entire world and that science plays a very important part of our lives, science that we need to listen to. They're learning how to care for others in our community and they're learning how to be responsible, caring individuals. We need to remember that our teachers, our staff and our families are all affected by our students in school. Teachers have died from COVID as well as school staff. And although COVID nineteen seems to affect older people more, children and young adults have died of COVID as well. As of November, one thousand one hundred and sixty-three students in the United States have been diagnosed with a serious condition linked to COVID nineteen called multi-system inflammatory syndrome. Twenty of those children have died. And though maybe those numbers seem very, very tiny to some, I, it's not tiny to me. And also it sounds like the latest data indicates that children can be capable of spreading COVID nineteen. We need to keep in mind that more people have actually died from COVID nineteen than in the past, than in the past five flu seasons combined and coronavirus is much more contagious. When science return, tells us to return to classes, then yes, we should return. And until then, we need to take care of each other. I really encourage everyone to wear masks, socially distance and to encourage others to wear masks so that we can return to our lives again. And really, I want to say thank you so much to our school board, our teachers and our staff for keeping our students and our families safe. I appreciate everything that you're doing and my children do too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rita. Thank you to all the speakers tonight. Uh, I thank parents for being invested in the school district and I thank the students that spoke uh, for being great representatives of our student body and I appreciate them uh, sharing their thoughts as well. Um, one last call, April, I don't think anyone's joined, so. Again, for, for those that didn't speak tonight that have questions, uh, please seek out your teacher or building principal or superintendent, use that COVID email. That's a great way to get your question out there and we will, we will find the person that's best suited to answer you and they will respond, so. Thank you again. With that, we will move on to item number eight in our agenda, which is approval of the consent agenda. So we have all, uh, board has seen that as part of our packets. Uh, if there is any uh, item in the consent agenda that anyone would like pulled out, uh, we can do that, otherwise I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Tracy. Oh, I'm sorry, I just want to know real quick, when, when items are considered obsolete and they're determined that, which I know they are, but what happens to them, where do they go? Cause I, just curious. Cause I know there was a list of some items that were, you know, from athletic department that were obsolete. So I was just curious where those, where do they end up?
Yeah, Superintendent Grunz, I don't know if you want to answer that or, um, Mr. Bachman?
Did you have specific items you were thinking of?
Well, not, no, not in particular, just there was, I didn't, you know, there was some athletic items, not that I want anything, I'm just curious, like if there was a process, like how were, how were, I mean, cause I know there used to be a long, long time ago, they had like actions and stuff like buy a piano, you know what I mean, it's obsolete, that kind of thing, but I don't hear about them anymore, so I'm just curious what happened.
I see. Um, yeah, that is, um, controlled by state statute that we, there are only certain things that we can do. And so, uh, if we are getting rid of items, we can either auction them or, um, if we show that they have no value, they can be donated. Otherwise, um, they either have to be disposed of or auctioned. And I'm guessing that there just hasn't been any auctions because my guess is as he moved into the new school, a lot of that was, was cleaned out. But perhaps we'll get to the point where we, we do have items in the future. Mr. Bachman, if you have anything to add to that, feel free.
Thank you. Uh, yes, generally we've held an auction. We were planning to do an auction again this summer, but with everything going on, we just never got to it. So the items, as long as they're, they need to be advertised, so everybody has an opportunity for them. So an advertiser will be placed in St. Peter Herald, that's our official newspaper. And then after that point, we can do, uh, usually we've done online auctions.
Okay, thank you.
And this is Vicky Hager. Um, and I think there's a policy on that too, isn't there? I'm pretty sure we've got policies on that, so that'll be something we'll be getting to, Tracy.
Um, I do believe Jordan was going to have some type of auction or garage sale this past summer, probably before you came, Bill. I, I don't remember if that happened because of COVID or not, but I know there was, it was in the planning stages and I, I thought he had it, but I can't say for a hundred percent sure, because I did not go, so. But, um, that's usually what they try and do, and I don't know what the specific items were, but I know Jordan had some athletic uniforms and stuff from years back that he was trying to clean up.
That is correct. There were, uh, uniforms and some old equipment and that's what, uh, essentially this is as well.
Uh, this is Dixon, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Hager, I second it.
Excellent, thank you. We have. Listen, I'm a second.
Chair wondered, uh, I don't know, I guess you didn't open it for discussion yet, but I just wanted to let you know I was down at the district office today and all the bills are in order.
Excellent, thank you, Treasure Carlson. Any, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote to approve the consent agenda. John?
Carlson, I.
Bill?
Solder Lund, I.
Tracy?
Do we, I.
Vicky?
Hager, I.
Tim?
Open skirt, I.
Drew?
It's an I.
Leonard, I, uh, motion carries unanimously. We will now move into our action items and we have, uh, listed the audit and the levy, uh, first, so that we can listen to our auditors, uh, and then they can, uh, depart for the rest of their evening if they wish. Uh, we really appreciate, uh, their attendance and participation in the meeting. Uh, going over the audit is something that we do annually. Uh, I will say that we went over it for approximately thirty, forty minutes, maybe more than that, uh, at the finance committee meeting uh, this, a few days ago, this past week. Uh, and we recommended forwarding that audit, uh, to the full board. So there has been a lengthy, uh, discussion and presentation on it. Um, it's my understanding that we're going to try and condense that into about five minutes um, tonight because of all the agenda items that we have, but then uh, if board members have questions, by all means, we should take as long as, as, uh, we need to discuss this, but that is our plan, so I will turn it over, uh, to Mr. Regner and, uh, he can proceed.
Thanks, Ben. Um, yeah, we did talk about this at length at the, um, at the finance committee meeting and the audit this year is probably fairly close to budget, probably a little bit better. So, um, we've talked to Tom Olinger, who's our representative from ABDU, is here tonight to also talk and brief the board on it. And I'll turn it over to Tom and I guess I'd just like to thank Tom and his staff, Lane and Cliff and Lindsay for, uh, for a good audit. Um, it's, it's always a pretty stressful time of year for, for us, but in this year with the COVID, I know they've got a lot going on too, but they did, they did a nice job and, and I'd like to publicly thank them for that. And, um, with that, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Okay. Uh, thanks, Tim. Uh, is it okay if I share my screen? I just have a quick PowerPoint to go through.
Yep, I, I think.
Yeah, please.
Okay, I believe I should be seeing my screen right now, so, well, thanks, uh, thanks again, Tim, for, um, uh, for introducing and then the, the kind words, I know with, uh, with this year's audit, it was a little bit different and I would also like to thank, uh, management to working with us, because as a, as a firm, we take, uh, we take COVID seriously and we want to make sure that we take care of our staff also and we were able to, to do this effectively. Um, even though it was a little bit different from the norm, so we, we thanks, uh, for uh, working with us and, and, and working through that, so, so thanks, management, they did a, did a great job getting us information timely. Um, so kind of getting into the actual audit, um, like I said, I'll do an abbreviated, uh, presentation here, but, um, as far as the audit results go, um, we did have a single audit this year, which meant that we had over seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal dollars. And this has been consistent in like in previous years, uh, mainly looking at the, the, um, food service programs and then also Title I or II of the programs that we did, uh, this year and, uh, there were no findings related to any of those federal dollars, um, there. Um, we also take a look at the Minnesota legal compliance report and, um, we did have a, a couple of findings there and here are results for two thousand and twenty. Um, as we had in the past, the preparation of financial statements, um, is a finding and, and I, that has been consistent and is, is pretty common with, uh, several school districts there. Um, but we, we do prepare the financial statements and we submit it, uh, to Tim for, to do a thorough review, um, to kind of mitigate that, uh, that finding as much as possible. Um, we did a segregation of duties finding with the food service, um, and, you know, taking a look at that, you, 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 it's something to be aware of and you got to want to take a look at the cost benefit related to changing any of the duties around or, or adding additional um, steps in order to, uh, to eliminate that, but I think it's important to take, uh, to acknowledge that. Um, we also did some year-ended audit adjustments this year, um, you know, mainly with taxes and grants, which is, is common, we'll continue to work with Tim going forward. To make sure that, uh, you know, we kind of solely eliminate some of those audit adjustments and help in any, any way possible. Um, we did have a, a legal compliance finding related to collateral coverage. It was just slightly over, uh, over the statute, um, where the amount uh, at the bank exceeded the FDIC and any collateral there, um, but management has taken steps to, to ensure that, that finding going forward, um, and working with their bank to make sure that they have proper compliance with that. Um, and then also with the student activities, um, there was a finding related to that on just, um, identifying the purpose and, and outlining the purpose of the student activities, um, and management is also taking steps to, to put the policies in place in order to, to eliminate that finding going forward. Uh, taking a look at, um, the general fund. Um, this graph here shows the, the, the blue bars, um, your, your, your student counts and then also uh, the line will show what your, um, average daily, uh, membership of expenditures are, so as you can kind of see, um, over the last three years, that, that, um, that cost per pupil is, is pretty, uh, pretty, pretty similar to the previous year, so you're at twelve uh, five seventy-nine, which is down just slightly, um, which is partly due to the, also the increase in the student counts. Uh, taking a look at a key performance indicator, um, just looking at your overall general fund balance, um, as a percentage of expenditures. We are at, uh, for the end of two thousand and twenty at twenty-nine percent, which is really in line with where the statewide averages are. Um, you know, keep in mind that there's, um, uh, long-term maintenance, uh, facilities and maintenance deficit in there that will be uh, eliminated also moving forward as, as funding comes available and is being used there too, but really that overall, um, overall fund balance is right in line with where other cities, your, or other, um, school districts, your size and across the state. Uh, taking a look at the overall general fund budget to actual, um, there was a positive budget, budget variance, uh, this year, um, tied to some additional funding and, and some, some, uh, reduction in, in costs there, so overall, the, the fund balance for this year did increase by five hundred and twenty-two thousand. Um, the prior period restatement that we had there is due to a change in how we report student activities. Um, so that hundred and twenty thousand coming in is, is really the student activity accounts, um, coming under board control and moved into the general fund. Um, so your overall fund balance in the general fund is a little over eight million dollars. Um, taking a look at the overall property taxes, so, um, per ADM, uh, the St. Peter's School District is below where the averages are in both Region Nine and the statewide. Um, and then it's really kind of, um, a little above averages by the property tax, um, per home, um, but kind of right in line with per hundred thousand, uh, value credit, so really that, that average, uh, property tax per home is really kind of determine on how your mix of commercial versus real estate is, so, um, you know, you take a look at the ADM and also the per hundred, um, households, it's really kind of right in line with what other school districts, uh, have. Um, taking a look at the overall food service fund, um, that the food service fund did increase by two hundred thousand. Um, there was, uh, reduction in some of the expenditures, expenditures and then also some additional federal funds that were coming into this program, uh, towards the, the last quarter of the, of the school, so overall the fund balance, uh, for this year was about five hundred and thirty thousand. Taking a, a look at the community service fund, um, this, uh, did have a reduction in the community service fund by about a hundred thousand, there was a budget of one sixty-seven. Um, I think, you know, going forward, there's, there's certainly a reduction in, in revenues and, and, uh, community charges that will be, uh, be out there and there'll also be a little bit of a reduction in expenditures, uh, just because the facilities weren't whole, open and, uh, and really just the whole chain. and really just the whole change in the, the, the COVID environment that has had. So we're seeing a, a reduction in these community service funds just because of the, the lack of participation or, or, um, availability of those, uh, of those activities. Um, kind of taking a look at the overall debt service, um, the principal and interest for the next ten years, uh, stays relatively the same, um, you know, currently, uh, the, the school bond, uh, it was in two thousand and fifteen, we have a, uh, about fifty-three and a half million, uh, left to go on there, which, um, as you can kind of see, there's about three hundred thousand for the next, uh, or three million in the next, uh, three years or four years that we will be having debt service payments and gradually increases there, but overall stays, uh, pretty flat over the next, next several years. Kind of take a little look at the overall cash and investment balances. Um, we see for this year, we have about, uh, thirteen million in cash, uh, which is, uh, just right about the same as, as the previous year. There's not a whole lot of change in the activities. And, uh, the general fund cash did increase, uh, slightly along with just the debt service funds, uh, too, but the capital projects did decrease as the, the final costs of the, of the building are completed, but overall cash has stayed relatively the same from the, from the previous year. So kind of with that, I, I certainly have, uh, opened it up for any questions that you might have and, uh, like I said, we really appreciate, uh, working with the school and, and appreciate management, uh, helping us through this process and, um, I certainly opened any questions.
Thank you very much, Tom. We appreciate it. Board members, questions? And again, for the public, this is something that we went through, um, at length at the finance committee meeting. So, um, the board and, uh, and school district personnel have, have looked at this pretty extensively. Um, and this is something we do every year. Um, with that, I would consider a motion to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit.
So moved.
Carlson makes a motion.
Dixon second.
Solder Lund, second.
Okay, we have, uh, we have a, I heard Dixon second at first. Um, we'll do roll call vote. Uh, John?
I.
Bill?
Solder Lund, I.
Tracy?
Dewey, I.
Vicki?
Hager, I.
Tim?
Locan Skerritt, I.
Drew?
Dixon, I.
Leonard, I, uh, motion to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit passes unanimously. Uh, Tom, and, uh, thank you and please, uh, again, thanks to your staff and Mr. Regner, thank you, uh, very, very much. Uh, for working through this. Uh, we'll stick with you here, uh, as we move on to our second action item, which is approval of the certification of school district levy for taxes payable in twenty twenty-one, and this is related to that truth and taxation, uh, hearing that we had to start off the board meeting tonight.
Um, I can just jump right in there. It's okay here, Bill, if you've got anything to add, um, just to kind of move this along. Basically in your packet, there's the, the list of the twenty-five or thirty levies. Um, one thing that was a little unusual this year compared to other years is nothing changed from September when you approved the preliminary levy to now, the, the dollar amount is exactly the same at the six, six million, seven hundred thousand. Um, you know, most years, things have, there's been some change, you know, they came down from the state. They tweaked it here, tweaked it there, but I'm, I'm sure they're probably pretty busy with everything going on too. So maybe that's why nothing changed, but it's exactly the same numbers as you would have seen last September. Um, nothing, you know, if you remember then, we approved the maximum, um, nothing changed at all. Nothing went, you know, allowed us to go up or down. Um, that changed on there. So I guess in working with, with, uh, Superintendent Grandseth and the finance committee, um, this is where we, we would recommend, I guess, finance committee members will go on there, but, um, this is kind of where the levy came out. A lot of it is based upon student enrollments and, and those type of items. So, um, it's pretty consistent from last year at the two point three seven percent increase. And I guess, um, you know, we talked about it somewhat before the meeting at the truth and taxation. And I would just open it up, the questions of myself or Mr. Grandseth or the, the finance committee, um, on how to proceed. Basically, we do need to approve a levy tonight. Um, and then what will happen is we will certify it to the county and to the state. And, um, you know, in between here, all the taxpayers got their preliminary tax statement, which showed their change in, in taxes on their individual properties during the year. So that's why you do the preliminary. Then you give the, the taxpayers a chance to, to review the items and, and come to the truth and taxation meeting. And then we do need to do a final certification to the state to set it in motion for next year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Regner, and that, uh, this motion needs to be exact. Uh, do you need the, uh, percentage or just the exact dollar amount or both?
We just need the dollar amount, the six, seven, nine, seven, eight, eleven.
Excellent. So this is on page sixty-nine of your board packets. If we have any initial discussion or questions or a motion.
This is Dixon. Uh, I move approval of the certification of the school district levy for taxes payable in twenty twenty-one in the amount of six million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred eleven dollars.
I'll second it. Locan Skerritt.
Excellent. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, we will do a roll call vote. John?
Carlson, I.
Bill?
Solder Lund, I.
Tracy?
Dewey, I.
Vicki?
Hager, I.
Tim?
Locan Skerritt, I.
Drew?
Dixon, I.
Leonard, I, uh, a motion to approve the certification of the levy, uh, is approved. Thank you very much. We will, uh, move on to action item number three. Uh, consider area adult learning cooperative agreement. This is another, uh, thing that we do annually. Superintendent Grandseth, do you wanna leave this off?
Thank you. Um, and I think this would best be served by me handing it off to Tammy Skinner.
Thank you. Um, I would like to give you just a little bit of an overview of, um, our adult basic education program. So I thought I would share with you some stats from the last school year. The goal of adult basic education is really to help adults attain the educational skills that they need to either transition into post-secondary options or to gain skills that lead to improved or new employment opportunities. And our adult basic education program is a consortium of eleven school districts and the Lassure and Niclet County Law Enforcement Centers. Nate Warden is the coordinator of our consortium and he and his staff do a terrific job of accomplishing all the goals of ABE. During the twenty nineteen, twenty school year, there were fifty-one students enrolled in our regular classes. Uh, there were thirty-two females and nineteen males and their ages ranged from eighteen to fifty-nine years of age. Now our numbers are down a little bit from where we normally are. Um, again, that is due to closing down, um, our buildings back in March. But in addition to the United States, the following other countries were represented in our classes. Mexico, Guatemala, Somalia, Sudan, Ghana, Thailand, El Salvador and Honduras. Staff worked with twenty-two high school students to help them earn the recovery credit so that they could graduate on time. We also had one adult who earned their GED and two, their high school diploma. Earning a high school diploma is quite an achievement because the adult learner has to spend the same amount of time of in-seat hours for class credit as a high school student spends for a class. And for some adults who are working full-time and raising a family, it can take several years for them to accumulate all of the credits. We also had one adult who completed their citizenship preparation course and this will assist them when they take their citizenship test. During the past school year, uh, the bridge to ready work skills, uh, job skills class helped people with the following skills, resume writing, interview skills, situational judgment on the job and digital literacy. Students enrolled in this class do not need to be working with an agency and they don't need to be referred. Last year, there were ten people that participated, seven of them were females and the age ranges again were eighteen to fifty-nine years of age. Due to COVID, we were unable to host our commencement ceremony last spring. We hope this year that it'll be different. Um, because this is such a significant achievement for our adult learners. This fall, we are serving most of our students virtually, but we do have some adult learners without access to technology. And so those individuals are able to make one-to-one individualized appointments with the staff. Um, now if you'll just take a look at the ABE resolution and education agreement, uh, you'll see that it is the same as previous years. There are no changes to this at all. Services will remain the same. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? I don't know if the answer would be any different if I was asking. Well, thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate your, your leadership, um, you know, for adult education as well as, uh, uh, everything you do with community classes and community education and, uh, you know, you always, uh, you always have wonderful things to say and, and your programs do so well and it's, uh, it's great to hear this in the midst of, of everything and, uh, congratulations to all those students who, uh, have things to celebrate this year. That's great.
Thank you.
Anyone, uh, willing to make a motion to, um, accept the cooperative agreement?
I think you need to read the resolution.
Yes, I do. This does require a resolution and it is an annually required resolution to support the agreement in place with surrounding communities to provide services at the area adult learning center. Is that the resolution? What page is it on? Oh, I'm sorry. I see it now. Seventy-three for board members following along in their packets. Uh, whereas the Board of Education strives to provide a comprehensive community education program which serves, uh, the recreational, enrichment, cultural and academic needs of residents. And whereas the Board of Education hopes to realize the academic goal by making adult basic education opportunities available to its residents. And whereas the Board of Education understands that this program's funded through PL two thirty, Adult Education Act of nineteen sixty-five as amended, and NS chapter one twenty-three point five five, sub, uh, section eight, general powers and independence for the district. And chapters one twenty-four point two five, subdivisions one point two and four. Um, education program for adults need to be part of a cooperative basic, uh, education delivery system established written agreement among slash between two or more school districts. Now therefore it be resolved, uh, that our school district agrees to work with Lassure Henderson, given Fairfax, Westrop, Tri-City United, Sibley East, Niclet, Cleveland, Wasika, Janesville, Waldorf, Pemberton, New Richland, Heartland, Ellendale, Geneva, Waterville, Elysian, Morristown and the Lassure County Law Enforcement Center and Niclet County Law Enforcement Center. And establishing a cooperative adult basic continuing education project for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year.
I move the resolution.
Dixon, second.
Thank you. We have a, a motion by Carlson and a, and a second by Dixon. Uh, we will do a roll call. Uh, John?
Carlson, I.
Bill?
Solder Lund, I.
Tracy?
Dewey, I.
Vicki?
Hager, I.
Tim?
Locan Skerritt, I.
Drew?
Dixon, I.
Leonard, I. Resolution carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Tammy. Thank you, board members. Um, we will now, uh, move on to, um, considering learning model recommendations. So Superintendent Grandseth?
Yes, I, as you heard before, we provided our presentation. We do have, uh, all of the principals in the meeting. We also have Jody Fishnick, uh, from the regional support team, joining us tonight to help answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Well, this is Tracy. I'll just start asking. Um, the first one is when I look at the one, we're bringing people back, I'm curious what the method to the madness was in terms of bringing the high school back to hybrid on the eleventh as opposed to not bringing them back to hybrid on what would be considered what the sixth, right? Because the first two days would be planning days. Why are we waiting that week?
Um, well, and originally we had hoped to bring them back, uh, at the same time. That is one of the things that the regional center talked to us about. They really wanted there to be a longer waiting period between, um, winter break and when people might be gathering and when we started them in hybrid. And when you look at the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan, it actually says that middle and high schools could start thinking about transitioning to a hybrid or, or, um, in person as appropriate after July, January, I keep saying July instead of January, after January eighteenth. But because we had set that fourth as a date, they're letting us come back, uh, a week earlier. So that, that's the explanation I have for having them come back on the eleventh rather than the sixth.
I guess that leads into my next question of if, if the, if all of this has to be approved by the regional support team, then why isn't it just a regional support team decision? Because then they can get the emails and not us, because honestly, regardless of what we would say, if we're gonna deviate from this plan, it's gonna be against their recommendation. So that's, I guess, what doesn't make sense to me. It's like, is it a local decision or is it not?
I think it's a decision that's made in collaboration.
It doesn't feel, feel very collaborativity though. You know what I mean? It just kind of feels like, well, if that's what we thought was best, it doesn't really matter because that's not what they want. I don't mean to sound like a little kid, but that's kind of what it is. So then I'm like, well, let's just vote on it and be done. Because, you know, there's no point to the discussion. And yes, that might be some frustration coming on on my part, but that's just kind of how I feel. Like I don't understand the process.
And we, we just tried to fit some, make a recommendation. Uh, you know, we did try to be more aggressive with that recommendation. And when we're talking with the team and the data that they have and the predictions they have for the future, um, you know, the, the bigger push was for elementary to be in person. And so that, that's their priority and it's our priority as well. We would love to have them come back. But if they're telling us that they don't feel that it would be um, in the, the best decision for the health of the community to have them come back earlier, then that's, that's why we changed the date. And Jody, I don't know if you have more you can add to that, um, or if I covered it.
Good evening. Um, I would say you mostly covered it, Bill. I think, um, another factor there is, you know, we're deviating from what the guidance says. So they're saying that the, the guidance of, the case rate guidance applies to, does not apply to elementary schools, but applies to, um, high school and middle school students, which would put us squarely in distance learning still at this point. And so I think that's another reason why, you know, the, the regional support teams approval is necessary.
I also thought that there was, um, that, that those county numbers were supposed to be one part of the piece of the puzzle. And that it was to be a decision that would be considered, you know, how is it affecting our school and our local community? And so, but if we're just gonna put ourselves in a number, it outputs the number and this is what the. And so, but if we're just gonna put ourselves in a number and outputs the number and this is what the support team says, then I don't know, we're just kind of here just kind of saying, okay. It's very frustrating for me, I guess. I don't know. And when they're talking about the health of our of our students, they're talking about the COVID health. They're not talking about the education they're missing out on and they're not talking about the mental health of these students. So I think I think I probably will just mute myself at this point, but that's kind of, I'm just, I just don't feel like there isn't much room for discussion, so.
And Tracy, I I feel your frustration. I think we have been a district, our superintendent, our past decisions that have really said that we will follow state guidance. It is helpful when that state guidance is definitive. And in some ways, this is much more definitive than it was to begin the year because they are saying, you must do this. You can't do this. I feel for public health professionals and other school districts when the advice is you must ignore the county case numbers in K five and you must pay attention to them in six twelve. That is that is difficult. Again, I have been frustrated at many times in this process too about what decisions can we make and and wanting to follow the state guidelines and not necessarily being completely understanding completely what they want. But I do think that we have more local control than a restaurant that wants to be open. That's been pretty definitive. You can't be open at all. And if you try and be open, we've seen liquor licenses being revoked or suspended or direct action. I haven't seen that with school districts. So I do appreciate that the state is trying to be prescriptive so that we're all abiding by the same same guidance, but giving that regional team a chance to bend the rules. And I think this this plan that we're looking at is, like Jody said, bending some of those rules. Our numbers are still higher than the recommended or or the past state guidance of being able to come back in hybrid. But because of the new guidance, because of the new rule that we can go to the the regional center, the regional center is saying, okay, we see how you can bend this a little bit. So yeah, I I agree, but I think there is some local control and a lot of conversation happening between those regional centers and school districts.
So Jody, so is it safe to say then that all schools in Nicolet and La Sure County are not coming back any, I mean, they aren't bringing their kids back any sooner than January eleventh and or they aren't allowing their nine through twelve to be all in person? I mean, I'm assuming if it's a decision that's made by that regional team, that regional team would make the same recommendation for all schools within those counties?
I I would say, I mean, I would have to double check Tracy, but I would say that 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 is accurate. I think where we got the flexibility too was, you know, we we had, you had made the decision that we we would go to distance learning through January fourth and then a decision would be made then. And, you know, if you technically read it, it says that you've made a decision to move on to the next step, you know, a different learning model as of January fourth. And that was something that after our our last work session, it was just kind of in progress. And so I kind of felt like they kind of grandfathered you in. They could have made you wait till January eighteenth based on the new guidance, because we started reaching out to them and talking about that. And then they were surprised as everybody was about Governor Walz's recommendations and and the new guidance that came out. So they did kind of emphasize that we did get grandfathered in for that. So I mean, I guess in terms of choices, there are still choices where, you know, the district could still choose to be in a more restrictive model from that perspective.
And we do, we are very hopeful that we'll be able to follow the dates that are in this plan. Even though technically to be to go into hybrid, our numbers would need to be less than thirty. And right now we're at about sixty-five, so we're about double that that number. But again, it's really going to depend on what happens in the in the coming weeks. I think if we if we were to maintain where we were, we'd be able to still be allowed to do that. But if we see another spike, then we we probably wouldn't receive that approval.
Yeah, I'd like to commend Nicolet County. I think we're the third lowest in the state right now. If not the third, it's the fourth and you know, Minnesota as a whole is doing much better than than some other states. Jody, I think I saw over the weekend that one percent of the US population was diagnosed with COVID in the last two weeks. So this isn't over. I'm excited that we can see vaccines on the horizon. There are two shots. They're twenty-one days apart. So it will be there there will be some time yet before we get shots and then before we have two shots. And I I hope that district personnel can get those shots soon. But the public as a whole probably isn't going to be vaccinated for quite some time. So this is something that we still need to manage closely and pay attention to and unfortunately are at the mercy of.
Our vaccine that was set to ship this week has been delayed, but our hope is that, you know, we'll be in phase A one probably through the end of January. We're tentatively hoping to start vaccinating school staff by February. We have some dates picked out. We met last week. We looked at some dates that might work with the school calendar. So I think we are looking at, I don't know, was it February fifth and March fifth roughly? So it might be optimistic, but we do have those dates penciled in. We even do have some dates penciled in for community wide vaccination. We are hoping to do a mass vaccination at St. Peter High School. Tentatively, right now, we're looking in April. So keep your fingers crossed, but that could, um, you know, I think it helps a little bit to have that light at the end of the tunnel.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm pleased that we got some change in direction from Governor Walz. I think we've all been waiting for that for a long time. I was just pleased, but I'm also very pleased by Nicolet County and La Sure County residents doing what they did to keep the numbers down. It's fantastic. For the change in learning model, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I of course, we've all wanted the elementary kids to get back as soon as possible. We want all students to get back as soon as possible, but I think we recognize that they're a special case. And but the our guidance hadn't changed. And now it has. And I I I listened to Dr. Ulsterholm. He releases information weekly and he's a epidemiologist and director of the Center of Infectious Research Policy at the University of Minnesota. Like, he knows his stuff and right before Walz made his announcement, the changes, he kind of publicly came out and said, hey, we have a lot of data. And the and the best data available to us says that students are students, nine and young are not the ones spreading this virus in schools. He said he's he'll be very comfortable getting those students back into school. And I love hearing information like that for people who are trotted professionals and study this stuff and are definitely in the know. So I'm glad that that has come down. I'm very comfortable with this transition to in-person learning for all of our elementary and early childhood students. And the and the pace of it, I mean, that makes sense to me. I'm hopeful that we can do, get back to hybrid learning with the middle school and high school as soon as possible. I I understand that's has a lot to do with our case numbers at that time. So I guess two questions that I have for the elementary incoming transition. We know that we're basically overriding previous guidance or the guidance has changed there. But there's still an option that, oh, if numbers increase, we may have to dial that back. So do we know what that threshold is? And then second, I just want to confirm for the middle school, high school that that guidance hasn't changed. We're still looking at the ten, twenty, thirty cases per ten thousand.
Sure. The for the elementary, those dates, we're pretty solid with that. And when I said there's a difference on the on the recommendation, one says dependent on COVID nineteen data. That's really what we're talking about, local data. And so I think the the biggest piece for that is our ability to staff that, making sure that our staff is healthy enough to have in-person learning. If we have a number of staff who have positive cases or have a need to quarantine and we aren't able to staff our buildings appropriately, that would be probably the one thing that would stop us from moving forward. At the middle and high school level, you're right. We, there isn't really a change in data that we're looking at that. That is following the original guidance of the state. And those thresholds again, twenty is the threshold between, or no, sorry, ten is the threshold between in person and hybrid. And then from twenty to thirty is when they go to distance at high school based on that guidance. Keeping in mind that our guidance had included looking at the county data, but then also looking at our more local data of what's going on in our school. Are we seeing those transmissions in school? And so our hope is that when we come into hybrid for our middle and high school students that we won't see a lot of transmissions happening at school or close contacts happening at school. We were able to do that for most of the fall until right before we went into distance learning and we saw an increase in the number of cases and the number of close contacts. So our hope would be that when we come into hybrid, we'd be able to maintain that.
Thank you, Superintendent Granseth and Member Dixon. Just to follow up on that quick, and then Tim has a question. Superintendent Granseth and Jody, the the plan is for us to return to hybrid based on we can't base it on the numbers because we don't have those numbers yet because it's three weeks in the future. But what I'm hearing is that the collaborative and the districts are comfortable with where the where the numbers are right now returning to hybrid. So so we would, if that's true, we would be returning to hybrid with numbers higher than twenty. Where we say dependent on the numbers is the district and the collaboratives opinion might change if those numbers went to two hundred or a hundred and eighty or something like that. Is that fair?
I think there's been a real recognition that, you know, the health of the students does include, you know, being able to attend school every day and and learning and kind of weighing that with the rest. So I think that's a big reason for the change. You know, nobody, nobody really knew that it would go on for this long. And and I think the the general attitude is everybody wants the students back in the classroom. It's just, you know, the safest way to do it.
Thank you. Tim? Oh, Tim and then Vicky?
Yeah, Chairman Leonard, I I'm gonna talk a little bit and piggyback off of Tracy. And I think everybody is frustrated with the process and the fact that we have to go with a number. I mean, it kind of frustrates me a little bit when I see that Nicolet County is the fourth best, but we still are higher on the number scale and I I totally get that sort of, but it's it's frustrating when we all want the kids back in school. Now, with that said, it was really, I'm with Drew. It was great to see going the other way and the the definitive process that our K through four for sure, you know, I like, I like what's in front of us, that we're getting them into school. We're getting them back in front of the teachers. I think we heard that, that it's important to get in front of teachers. There's no doubt about that. And I I think we virtually could see with all the the public speakers that that came forward and are passionate about half of them coming back, half of them wanting to be safe. There's certainly a divide and and we're tasked with the situation of, you know, going with the recommendation or not. Tracy, I do feel like our hands are tied a little bit. I think that we have an obligation to not look at just what we think or say, but what our school district and how to protect our school. Whether it be finances, whether it be our job is to look after the school as a whole on top of that too. So I I like the direction of going back to back to school as best we can, as fast as we can. I don't like that we have to go with numbers, but I think our hands are tied and we have to go with numbers. And if that's what we're going to do and we're going to go to the regional support team and we're going to, we're doing what we have to do to try and get our kids back to school. I I just I just think in looking at things from an entire school district and protecting our ourself against any possible mishap that would happen. Should something happen, when we go against what is recommended and something happens, we could be facing some pretty serious consequences. So I'll mute now too, just like you said, so.
No, thanks, Vicky.
Um, yeah, I, you know, I I too, I am frustrated because it feels like even if we, even if we would say we want the kids back into school, I mean, it, we're kind of on the fence. We were told that, okay, but the numbers are saying this. So I am frustrated with that. But I'm also I feel like we all kind of knew or I thought that with the holidays coming that we were going to have some high spikes. And people were saying, you know, well, we're probably going to go distance learning. And I think in the back of our minds with the holiday, we all kind of assumed that that was going to happen. I liked when we had decided on January fourth, talking about the kids coming back. If it's another week that we have to wait, I think that that's okay. I I don't like hurrying people. So the parents have to hurry up and get daycare or the parents have to hurry up and do this or, you know, and the teachers have to hurry up and we're giving them time to get their lesson plans ready. I want the kids back in school. I think that that's the main thing is to get them back in school. And so if we have to wait another week, I I don't see a problem with that. I just think that getting them back is really important. The trouble we're going to have is when the there's no staffing. Then we'll probably have to, you know, come up with another solution there. But as far as the numbers going down, it's a positive sign to me. I I really would like to see the kids get back into school. I guess that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Chairman Carlson?
Yes, Chairman Leonard. One question I have is we're relying on the expertise of the regional support team. I'm just curious, could you just tell us some of the people that are on that, how big it is? Just some general information on that that regional support team.
Jody, I'm gonna let you take that on because you meet with the whole team. I feel like I meet with part of the team.
All right. I'm not sure specifically, Board Member Carlson, of all their various positions, but Mackenzie Woolfall is is, we have three main people from the state, Mackenzie Woolfall, Julie Wicklund, I'm sorry, and Kelsey Rose is from the Service Cooperative. So Julie Wicklund is an epidemiologist with the state. So Julie Wickland is an epidemiologist with the state, uh, Mackenzie Wolfol normally and, and regular times would head up. The HIV and STD Prevention Program. Um, you know, a lot of people at MDH have been reassigned for these purposes, and then Kelsey Rose works out of the. Service Cooperative, and then it would be, you know, the superintendents, uh, people from public health, myself and Jen Sealy. Um, she's another public health nurse at Nicola County. And so, um, it kind of varies a little bit based on what, what schools are involved.
So we, we, it sounds like a pretty expert group as far as from the health uh, perspective, as far as this.
MBE is involved as well.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
MBE, the Department of Education is involved with that as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, um. So that gives me confidence that, that uh, we have experts that are advising us. Uh, both that from the state level as well as the county level. Uh, I'm reassured by that. I feel good about where our numbers are. Again, we go back and forth between talking about the scrubbed numbers that are two weeks old or the current numbers and. One nice thing that I think is a, a great trend is um, the numbers for December fifth, which are the most recent ones. That are scrubbed are actually twenty uh, twenty uh. Number, twenty people or tw- whatever that percentage would be per ten thousand less than what was originally the current number. The previous week was actually thirty less, and so the fact that we're, you know, where we're at. And then the previous week wasn't, was lower, not significantly. But um, I think with us being at forty-eight, I want to commend the regional support team and Jody and. Uh, for allowing us to uh, go to hybrid learning at the uh, middle school and high school level, I think. Uh, we appreciate that uh, you've, the thought that's been put into that and uh, helping us get our. Kids back into school at the hybrid level at least. Mister Grant Seth, if I could, could I get a scenario of, there was that little tail. Tail at the end that you would be able to switch to more restrictive, could you give me some sort of scenario so I can kind of understand? Why that's being asked for and.
Absolutely, um, I think a, a, a good example is where we've been, like right before we went into distance learning. At that time, we were probably about a day away from not being able to staff our school for that day. And um, if we get to the point where we are struggling to meet staffing. There, I may have to say that we need to shift into a more restrictive model. Uh, while our staff recovers. That isn't something that I would necessarily want to do. Without talking to the board members and likely I would be sending out information um, to everyone about that. But just in case there is a need to, to switch on short notice. Or if MBE, uh, the commissioner calls and says, uh, you need to change your model, I. I just need the authorization to be able to do that quickly. My intent would not be to. Do that without talking to you. I wouldn't want to do it without talking to you unless I absolutely had to.
And can I.
Treasurer Carlson, just to, just to follow up on that first, uh, my example is a snow day. You know, we don't have a board member, board meeting to decide that we should have a snow day because that happens. In the morning and we expect our uh, superintendent to drive around at five AM and talk with other districts and make that. Call because that call needs to be made, so uh, that's, that's the example I would give. Um, this wouldn't be anything that, oh, we want to shift in the future, it's, we can't be open today. Um, I have to make that call now, we can't have a school board meeting at five thirty AM kind of situation.
I understand that, uh, Chair Leonard, I guess if you need, this is a significant thing that would affect days beyond. That when you make that decision, because the biggest problem we have is we have to give three days notice if we're gonna have a meeting. And if it needs to be done in a shorter time span, I'm all for it. As long as when you do make that move, that you schedule a board meeting to discuss it with us. Three days after you've made that decision, or I, I don't know if it's school days or how it has to play out, but. I think that that would, and then you can kind of just, not, let's be honest, in this meeting, you're not just talking to us, you're talking to the public as well, and I think. That would give them, give you a chance to explain to the board and the public as well as to why the change was made.
Just to put some specificity on that, it's seventy-two hours, so it's um, seventy-two hours from the time you call it to the time of the meeting.
Yeah, we can also schedule an emergency meeting. Um, I think we've been in MSBA meetings where they used to say you should never ever have an emergency meeting. Um, that was before COVID, so I think there's an understanding that um, you know. Sometimes that is necessary, um, can we also do the seventy-two hour uh, thing, yes. Um, I will say too, just for the public knowledge, uh, other districts are choosing to decide this in different ways. Uh, so the Mankato School Board has left it completely up to the superintendent, they are not voting on changing learning models. Um, so I like the way that we have done it, I like the fact that the board has taken responsibility for it. Uh, but there, there's no legal requirement that says it has to be the school board making every decision, we can choose to do that. Uh, how we want to within the district, and I think that mix of emergency versus planned. Uh, is a good mix uh, for me. Um, I do want to recognize too that uh. Member Soderland has had his hand up for a while, so I want to give him a chance to weigh in.
Thank you, Ben. I, I'm gonna go in the weeds just a little bit. I had the opportunity to talk to a public health nurse, Jody, today and uh. I've done some research. As far as how can we protect our students and staff at a higher level than we currently are? And, and one of the ways we can do that is with, with masks. And there's N ninety-five masks, the, the comp, the comparable mask that's ubiquitous, you can get them. Readily and easily are called K N ninety-five masks. And uh, in short, I particle, had my engineer and quality assurance director go through and test these different types of masks. And we did particle count testing on the filter of the mask. And you test at uh, three, zero point three, zero point five, zero point seven microns. And uh, just to determine the efficiency of these filters that the masks have. At uh, reducing particle counts. And what, what we found was the KN ninety-five mask and the N ninety-five mask are comparable. I don't want to get off into all kinds of. Tansons here, but the mask that the Saint Peter Saints uh. Students wear are uh, not very good, and I'm being kind. If, if we're really gonna be serious about this uh, reducing risk. I would uh, like to collaborate with the public health. And actually look at data and science and what we can do as a school district, regardless of what the state's telling us, I mean, this is just. Fact and science. We can uh, mandate that the students and the staff at least wear surgical masks. Their superior filtering ability compared to cloth masks, so the homemade mask as a rule. Are about two notches above being worthless. The surgical masks show a fifty-five percent reduction in transmission. The KN ninety-five and the N ninety-five masks uh, are being worn by healthcare providers in direct contact with COVID patients. Along with a, a, a face shield and gloves, and they're able to interact. Regularly with patients that have COVID and they're not getting it. So that being said, there are things that we can do as a school district, because people are worried about this and they rightfully so. That we can reduce the risk of exposure within that setting. And one thing is screening, where, uh, in my opinion, we're essentially doing no screening. Uh, I think we lack education, I think there's a, a, you know. Misunderstanding, if you have symptoms, do not send your child to school. If you've got symptoms and you're a teacher or para. Or custodian, then we don't want you to show up to school, and we don't know, it could be the cold. Uh, it, it could be influenza, it could be COVID, because the, the symptoms uh. Look a lot alike, but if you have those symptoms, don't go to school and don't send your child to school. So I think, uh, I appreciate the regional team, I think there's some science and things that are being. Or there, we, we can use science to do a better job as a school district regardless of what the state's advocating. The state's advocating wearing a mask, well, it doesn't tell us what kind of mask. And uh, you know, there's better quality masks that we could be offering as a school district, so. I feel comfortable in opening the school up, provided that we are taking those types of precautions. So. That's all I have.
Thank you, Member Soderland.
Uh, Chair Leonard, I had one other thing that I was hoping uh, would be considered. I think po- part of the reason uh, that uh, we're allowing K four to uh. Go in person is because science tells us they're not spreading it. Uh, like the, the next age group up. I think another problem is that their ability to learn. Uh, through the, through a Google Meet, I think that that has an impact as well, that they just don't adapt as well. On the flip side of that, I hope we will consider uh, some sort of hybrid plus mode for those. Uh, students that can handle technology and use it as a learning tool. Meaning uh, possibly allowing uh, them to uh, come one day and uh, Zoom or Google Meet in. On, on, on the, their off days, it would allow them to go, uh, I'm talking about at the middle school and at the high school level. To uh, allow them to participate, it would allow the class to advance beyond. You know, just getting one day done and, and Monday and Tuesday, they could get actual two days done. It might go a little bit slower because you might have to review some of the material on the next in-person day. But uh, I think we're forgetting that there's an art to teaching. And the part of the, part of the beauty of being, being a quality teacher like, like we have on our staff. Is they inspire and motivate uh, uh, their students, and so. The more interaction they can have with their students, I think the more valuable, whether it's, you know, like we are tonight. Or if it's uh, you know, in person, obviously in person is, is best, but. I think we need to look at some sort of hybrid plus for middle school and high school. And uh, that, I hope that that's considered. I, again, I'm not an educational, I'm not an education professional. It just, I'm just thinking, it's just thinking out of the box and I will leave it to the education professionals. To de- determine whether that's a viable option.
Uh, thank you.
If, if I could, I just want to say, I know that some of that um, has been happening, happening with some classes. Maybe not all the time, but I think that there's been events like when a speaker is coming or if they're doing. You know, some kind of experiment that it works well online. I think where it works. People have started doing that, and I would expect that that would continue. But we will certainly take that under advisement. Um, I know it is one of the areas that. Uh, was included in the safe learning plan is uh, people shouldn't be expected to do that all the time. Like that isn't the main way that they're teaching on that day, uh, but I think there are certainly opportunities that it could work really well. For both students and staff.
Thank you Superintendent Grant Seth, any further discussion?
Well, we can.
Tracy, you have another question?
Yes, I just want to confirm that the um, January fourth, our extracurricular activities will be coming back for practice. Oh, you're on mute, Mister Grant Seth.
I owe Mrs. Olkey a quarter. That, that is our plan, uh, all of the coaches are working on preparedness plans right now because. They have to follow all of the protocols and have those plans in place and on file so that anyone can. Um, click into our website or see them at the events. And to show that there is a plan and how to be safe while we're doing it.
And then, just to confirm too with the um. With this, the clause there with the superintendent being yourself to make these decisions. And then Ben kind of comparing it to that of a snow day, so. Are we anticipating that you would wake up on a, on a morning at five AM and have to do out a phone call saying there's no school today because we don't have enough teachers? Or are we anticipating that decision to be more like, okay, we're kind of at that thing, we'll, we'll cripple through today, but I don't think we'll be able to do tomorrow or the next day? Like how, I mean, should we be prepared for a six AM phone call saying, no, you know, I'll go on to distance learning?
You know, our, our hope is that that doesn't happen, but um, right before we went into distance learning last time. We were about one person away from not being able to, to make it work. Um, so it is a possibility that there's, you know, some. Event or some big exposure that we don't know about, that could lead to having to call at last minute.
Okay, so with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the um. Recommendations for the changes in the learning models with, with one X and the return to sports as of January fourth, because before we made a motion to. To suspend them, so I would just say we are agreeing to abide by the Minnesota State High School League rules, that's how we could probably word that. Um, with the exception that the superintendent, if there is a decision that needs to be done that day, that that can happen, but if there's more than twenty-four hour notice. That we should just do an emergency school board meeting. So I don't know how we want to word that, but that would be the motion that I'm making.
How would we know there's twenty-four hours notice?
Well, either he's gonna call at six AM in the morning or he wouldn't. I mean, if he wakes up in the morning and finds out that there's twenty-five staff out, yes, we can have school. But if the decision is, is that's going to be tomorrow or the next day, with technology, how could, how could we not do an emergency meeting? I mean, it's not like we all have to travel in to do that.
I, I think if we. Add it into the recommendations. Under emergency circumstances or not, well. I don't know if I deem it as an emergency, but. Well, let, let me read the um, the recommendation. Grant authorization to the superintendent to shift to more restrictive learning models as necessary due to staffing levels. Or regional support team, MDH or MBE direction. It is, it is in those.
Yeah, I just really feel that the little tiny, tiny little bit of decision-making power that we have is kind of being taken away.
Well, it's, it's still within the district because it's our superintendent and we do authorize him to spend twenty-seven million dollars a year, so. Um, I think I, I'm comfortable um, with our superintendent being tasked to make that. Decision in a split second, given that he's going to be closest to all of the information needed to make that decision.
Well, and I certainly am comfortable with that too. That's if that decision needs to be made right away. I'm just saying if the decision is made for a future day. That we would do an emergency meeting, but that's my motion, if nobody is gonna second it, that's fine, but I just want the minutes to show that that was my motion.
Well, this is uh, Bill Soderland, I'll second that motion.
So that motion limits Superintendent Crown Seth in time. And also references the State High School League, which is an independent body, not the state.
So do you want to.
I don't think.
If you want to change. So do you want to, if you want to change the Minnesota State High School League part, I don't care. We can just say they're coming back on January 4th. I'm just trying to think of a way to word that. So obviously with the sports, I'm assuming we're just going to do what the State High School League is recommending. But if we don't want that in there, then take that out, I guess.
Superintendent Gronseth.
The activities starting on the 4th was actually part of the executive order. So it was the governor's order that stopped the activities and it was the governor's order that is allowing practice to come. So it's not actually the high school league.
Okay, then we can take that part of the motion out.
Was that included in the presentation tonight? I thought you put something about co-curriculars in there.
Yep, it's, it was on the second page under changing guidance.
So, so to Tracy's motion, if we, if she just says the recommendations provided tonight, that would include co-curriculars, correct?
Yep.
Thank you, John, for helping.
It would, it would also, because I want to be true to Tracy's motion, it would also include the emergency powers to the superintendent as written in the presentation, which is different than I heard Tracy talking about. Just to, just to be true to the motion.
I'll start over. I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendation for changes in learning models as presented in the presentation tonight, with the exception of the superintendent's power to make a decision. If it has to be more than 24 hours, that we would do an emergency meeting.
Okay, now we're a little muddy because we have a motion on the floor and a second.
Okay, then I guess we deal with the first motion first. I don't know.
The first motion was that, but also had the State High School League information in it. That was the original motion.
I'll remove my second if I can.
How about just to be, just to, just to be above board, since we had a motion and a second, we vote on this motion. If this motion does not pass, we can revise that. Would you think that that is the best way to proceed Superintendent Gronseth? Or I'm looking to you on that.
Members, members Dewey could opt to amend her motion. And then you circle back to Dr. Soderland to see if he still seconds it as amended.
I prefer that.
Or we just, I, I think that's what I just did when I, when I create, we need to. I mean, I think that's what I just said. And then you said we had two motions. So that's kind of where we're at. So do you want me to repeat it again?
I think that, yes, we are asking you to revise your motion and then we will go to Member Soder London, ask him to renew or to not renew his second of your motion.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendation for changes in learning model as presented in the presentation tonight, with the exception of the clause for the superintendent decision being if the decision is going to be made more than 24 hours out, that we would have an emergency school board meeting. If it's a decision that has to be made immediately, that obviously he would make that decision.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, further discussion I would like to hear again from the superintendent.
Can we just check in with Sarah? I know that it's tough to sometimes catch up with these motions when you're taking minutes. But just making sure that she, she got that.
Chair Leonard, are you open to further discussion?
Please.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if I can vote for it necessarily. The only reason being is that I feel like we're, my job is one seventh of the board is to take the advice of, of our education professionals and our health professionals and then make a decision. I, I think if, if he feels, if the superintendent feels the need, all I need is three days. So to really have it explained to me why the decision was made.
Thank you, Treasurer Carlson. Others?
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't, I don't think the amendment is necessary. I don't think it makes what we're doing here any easier. And we trust our administration to make the right calls. So I won't.
Okay, anyone else? So because we have a motion and a second, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I would just like to say, I don't think it's a matter of trust or not trust. We could make a motion that will just rely on Superintendent Gronseth to make all decisions from henceforth. We don't even need to have a board meeting. But what I think Tracy is getting at, what I, what I'd like to see is absolutely if Superintendent Gronseth sees that there's a problem and we need to shut down the school or modify the learning, that we authorized it to do that, just like we would with a snow day. But we would like to be kept abreast of this. And I think there's been discussion in the past that, well, we don't want to get together all the time and, and maybe meet once a week or whatever during this COVID. I think whether it's 24 hours or three days, whatever that time is, that we all have a consensus that as a school board, we want to know about this. We want to be able to have some input in this. Otherwise, we're just here as a rubber stamp on anything that's going on. And I feel frustrated because it seems like that's what we're being asked to do. So whether it's 24 hours or 72 hours or five days, I think if, if we're going to shut down the school or modify things from what we've already agreed to do, I think we need to have another meeting.
I 100% agree with you, Dr. Soderland. I just don't think the timing is an emergency. I think three days would be fine.
Yeah, I, Tim.
I would like to make an amendment to the original motion that states.
I don't know that we can do that, Tim. I think the, I think that Tracy, because she made the motion, is allowed to amend. I don't know that others are.
I believe, can you offer a friendly amendment and she can decide whether or not to accept it?
Superintendent Gronseth, you're shaking your head.
Yeah, you can do that. You can offer a friendly amendment. And then if it's not accepted, he could move to amend the amendment. And then you vote on that and then you vote on the amendment and then you vote on the motion.
Correct.
Excellent. Go forth, Tim.
Well, I, I can offer a friendly amendment or I can just amend it, but we don't need three votes. So I'll offer a friendly amendment that says, if Superintendent Gronseth or the superintendent determines that we're going to go to a more restrictive learning model, that we have a, a meeting of the school board as soon as 72 hours or as quickly as possible henceforth. I mean, once that's decision has been made, as early as 72 hours instead of 24.
So can I clarify? So, so he makes the decision and then reports to the board what he did? Mr. Gronseth, I like you. I just want you to know that upfront. This is not a trust issue for me. This is a matter of me understanding what our role really is on the school board and feedback that I'm receiving in live time. So that's kind of where I'm trying to, so Tim, are you saying that the decision is made and then there's an informational meeting?
No, in three days, three days, we have a school board meeting.
Okay. And then.
I, I think maybe I can bring some clarity is what, what Tracy is saying that if, if I have to make a same-day decision, that I just, I just do that. But if I'm making a decision, so today is Monday. If I'm making a decision on Thursday, we're going to have to close, that I call a meeting and do that before I make that call for three days from now. But if I'm making it, like if I'm making it right now for the morning, I could just go ahead and do that and let you know that that's, that's what's happening. It's, it's when the decision is in the future that the board would be involved. That would be my intent anyway. But I think that that is what you're trying to capture.
So if that's your intent and if we can word it in such a way that your intent is clear as to how I made the motion, then even better. So I'll keep my motion or my amendment as is then.
Did that make sense for Member Locust Card?
It didn't make sense to me. Can you?
So it's, it's basically she's authorizing emergency authorization. So if I'm making a decision that today or tomorrow morning, we have to close, that I have the authorization to go ahead and do that. If I am making a call that in three or four days, we're not likely going to be able to continue, then I would call the board together because there's time to call the board together before that happens.
That makes sense to me. I just want to make sure that that is the, the intent and the wording of, of the motion.
That's.
I was clear, but.
That was, that's the intent of the amended motion.
Yes, the amended motion.
Okay, so we have that motion. Member Soderland, would you like to second the amended motion?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We will now, any further discussion? No? All right, we will do a roll call vote. Everyone clear?
We're voting on the amended motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
John?
Carlson, I.
Bill?
Soderland, I.
Tracy?
Dewey, I.
Vicki?
Hager, I.
Tim?
Locust Card, I.
Drew?
Dixon, I.
Leonard, I. Motion carries unanimously. All right, that brings us to the end of our information items. I appreciate all the board members' contributions tonight and thinking about this. And I appreciate the public input and I appreciate Superintendent Gronseth's work, our administrative team's work and all of our staff at the district. So thank you. Moving on to information items, we have the Community and Family Education Report and Profile. So Tammy Skinner.
Thank you. I'm just going to share my screen with you. And are you able to see the report?
Yes.
Okay, so each year I like to provide you with a report of the previous school year's information about community and family education. This is the cover page and just wanted to make mention that the top picture is from our BSL class for adults. Kind of a fun thing we did, we had some community members who came in. This was the fall of 2019 and they showed our students how to make pies from scratch. So with community and family education, we have the unique opportunity that we can design things to meet the needs of our community. So all of our programs and our services are really driven by community needs and the interests of our community members. Talking about the benefits of St. Peter Community and Family Education, first of all, we provide safe, accessible learning environments and opportunities for all ages. And that means we have the privilege of being able to access all of our school buildings and hold our classes in those locations as well as the community center. We also connect families to school and community resources. We have the opportunity to provide ECFE classes and school readiness preschool under ETVE's leadership. We also partner with the St. Peter Area Food Shelf to offer the children's weekend food program and the teen pantry. And we collaborate with the senior center in order to offer programming through the recreation department. Our program is called Life Classes, which is Learning is Forever. Again, with ETVE's leadership, we are able to help prepare children for kindergarten, whether it's through early childhood screening, which helps us to identify learning issues that our young learners might have before they enter school. We also help kids get ready for kindergarten through all of our preschool classes. This is an important way that community and family education helps the district meet the, one of the state's World's Best Workforce Goals. We also support working families. Our Saints overtime program, which is formerly known as SAC, offers quality, safe childcare for students through the before and after-school care programs. During the summer, we also held our school age care program. Last year, we served 161 students. And in the spring of 2019, we were charged with providing care for those who are qualified as tier one workers with free emergency childcare. Last year, we had an average of 21 students per day in our program. And this year, as you know, it has expanded quite big. We have 100 students and are using the community center and both of our elementary schools to provide care. We also hired a new coordinator back in June. Shayna C., she does a wonderful job of providing leadership for our staff and for our students in the program. Another benefit of community ed is expanding the learning day beyond the school day. As you know, we have a wide variety of enrichment programs that are available for students, whether they're art, music or STEM classes, STEAM classes. All of those things help children learn critical, critical thinking skills and brush up on their problem-solving skills. And we know that those things benefit the student into their regular school day as well. Through our Adult Basic Ed Program, we help build a qualified workforce. I'm not going to go into the details because I kind of presented you with that earlier tonight. Also, we help improve the quality of life for people. Lifelong learning has a lot of different advantages, including helping people with relieving stress, fostering creativity, improving mental clarity. So enrolling in art classes or gaining skills like learning welding or you also improving your core in a yoga class. All of those things help to engage people. We also help create a sense of community and belonging through our programs. So we provide lots of opportunities for people to get to know each other. People who might never encounter one another will sometimes form great friendships through our classes. So whether that's attending one of our documentary films at the Historical Society or attending the Southern Minnesota Equity Summit or cooking class at the, at the food club, we connect people. And you'll see the picture at the bottom there is of the Southern Minnesota Equity Summit that was held in 2019. This is one of the breakout rooms. This was our first year of holding the summit and we were excited because we had 150 people attend. We had our second summit this year. It was a virtual conference and we had 325 people attend. So we're really proud of the things that are happening with equity work here in the community. Kind of a snapshot of our programs over the last year. We served almost 7,000 adults in the 2019-20 school year. This is about 40% lower than what we normally serve. And we know that is due to COVID and having to close programs and limiting our ability to serve people. But you can see we do that through our Adult Basic Ed Program, through parent education classes, adult enrichment and also our aquatics programs. And if I can just identify the people and the images that are taking place in the photos, if you look at the top left corner, that's in one of our adult language learner classes. The top right is from the treaty site and one of the documentary films. The bottom left is from a production that we had last February called Thunder Knocking on the Door. It was an interactive play. And then the bottom right is a historical reenactor of Teddy Roosevelt. It was a great day. Lots of people showed up for that event. With youth, last year we served almost 4,000 people. But again, that is about 50% less than we normally serve with kids. One of the biggest things was having to close things down and then. even though we provided a variety of opportunities for kids with virtual experiences over the summer, we did not see a lot of people taking those classes. So we just know um, that uh, our our numbers were really limited. But we serve our youth through ECFE classes, school readiness preschool, our School Age Care Program, after-school classes and events, summer enrichment, um, the Exploration Recreation Program, we partner with them, and also through aquatics. And to let you know what's happening in the photos here, the upper right, the upper left is from our Wet and Wild Swim Time with our School Age Care Program. And the far upper right is uh, Joni Anderson's preschool class. Aren't those little kids cute in that picture? Uh, the bottom left is um, from the fall of twenty nineteen, an after-school STEM class. And the lower right picture is from Saints Care, and there was um, the kids were doing a science experiment. So you can see through Community Ed, we do a variety of things, um, and we're excited that we can be part of the school district, and we are happy to serve our community.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Tammy. Questions, comments for Tammy?
You have great programs. I think that's very important for our community, and I thank you for it.
Thank you. We have a lot of great people that work with us.
Also want to thank you, we've together the um, Saints Overtime. I know that's been like a maybe a headache. I don't know, probably, um, of it in itself, and it's helping a lot of people. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I've uh, known Tammy for many years, and uh, she truly has a heart for the children, the adults, and the community and and everybody. Uh, so thank you, Tammy, for all you're doing. I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay.
Well, Tammy, if you want to unshare your screen, we'll uh, we'll move to the first reading uh, of revisions to the policy manual. So uh, Superintendent Grandseth or the Policy Committee?
Like, I can start and then they can jump in. We are beginning a huge undertaking of transitioning from our policies to MSBA numbering system and MSBA model policies, which in the long run is going to be very helpful for the district. Uh, it will be a lot of work on the front end, but once it's done, um, whenever there are updates from the legislature or in statute, um, we will be able to easily apply those uh, with the help of MSBA. So as we go into this process, we're going to have adoption of new policies and deletion of old policies. And on the website, there will be really two numbering systems. So we'll take our existing policies, and if someone is looking at, say, policy zero zero one, there may be a C policy four oh two. Yeah, I'm making those numbers up for the example. Um, but that is how we'll navigate this until we have all of the numbers uh, transitioned to the do the new numbering system. So the Policy Committee took on six policies for first reading, and there are, uh, I believe, seven policies that are up for deletion that correspond to those. I think it's been a good process, and perhaps I'll let the committee jump in and um, share their thoughts on on these policies and how it's going.
Well, this is Vicky. For me, it's been confusing. The number systems is really hard. But it's interesting when you start comparing the two that, you know, we're not too far off, but there are some some information that we don't have, which is really good that we're starting to apply that. So I think it's a good process.
This is Tracy. I'm also on that committee, and I think that that's been, I don't know, I'm kind of excited about it. I know that sounds weird, but um, it's gonna be a good time for us to clean some things up, and um, Mr. Grandseth is really good at hope, guiding us through that process as well. But the numbering system will be goofy for a little while, and there might be some policies that, you know, some policies overlap and things, so it'll be a work in progress, but it'll be really nice when it's done.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you uh, very much for the the work on the committee, and like we've said in previous meetings, that it's gonna be a a lot of work uh, going forward for the next year or two. So we really appreciate that. Uh, moving uh, forward, Superintendent Grandseth, um, would you like to speak about the communications plan?
Sure. Um, this was presented to a couple of committees. This was presented to the Communications Committee, and it was also presented to the Personnel Committee because there there are some implications there as well. Improving our district communication is one of our goal areas as we're going into this year, one of the goals that you've set for me to to work on. And so I've developed this plan, and it covers several areas. Um, each area has some specific tasks and uh, things that we want to accomplish, some objectives in rebranding, in just our overall communication, uh, including like our our weekly newsletters and updates, things like that. Uh, our website has been an area that we've wanted to see some improvement and some ongoing updates and um, maybe some ease of access to our website, some improvements on that. Um, we talked about emergency communications. It's never something that we want to have happen, but in those cases, it is really important that we have solid plans and and predictable ways that we're communicating with our students, our staff, and the community. And social media certainly has become an area uh, of growth. A lot of people use social media as almost their sole source of information sometimes, so it's really important that the district has an ongoing presence uh, in social media and that we are using it to the best of our ability. And then um, we did want to talk about enrollment marketing. That this is something that should be happening yearly and following our registration process and our kindergarten registration process, especially as we come out of this COVID time to make sure that we're reconnecting with families and um, knowing, having them know what we have available and what that's going to look like um, moving into the future. Uh, and then program support, programs like Tammy's and that need us to be communicating all that they have to offer in also with Jordan. There are many options or many opportunities for people to be engaged with the district. And so making sure that we are helping our programs to communicate well is important, too. We've talked about a referendum coming up and the importance of communication within that that referendum process, making sure that we're getting information out to the community and uh, that we have lots of opportunities to speak at for organizations or public meetings and making sure that our communication plan within that is solid. And of course, there's always celebrations and honors, and it's another way to share all the good things that are happening in St. Peter schools and making sure that we're engaging with the community and that they they know what's going on. That so that that was a lot of different areas, and each of those areas has objectives under it. And uh, really, we need some more, some more support. Uh, we need someone who's uh, coming to work every day and looking at outreach and engagement and working with all of our whole team on how to best do that and really organize that workforce to make sure that it's systemic, that it's um, predictable, and that we are, we are really sharing the story of St. Peter schools. And so I think I I gave a really fast overview of that. We did talk about it much more in-depth in our committee meetings. I think um, the areas that we talked about um, will help us to have that clear, effective, and purposeful communication that we need as a district. And there is within here the creation of an outreach coordinator position uh, that would be a a full-time position, but it's going to be a position that has a very full job description of working with many, many people throughout the district and working with community as well. I don't know if if the people around the Communications Committee or the Personnel Committee have any more to add to that. Feel free to jump in.
For the Communications Committee meeting, um, or committee, not a whole lot to add, other than just to reinforce it. Yeah, I we do see a need here. We know that other districts have gotten a lot of mileage out of retelling their story and um, really creating a solidifying identity. And uh, I think that is important, and we're kind of moving from that district that was it's it's an appropriate time to do that. And yeah, our website changed not long ago, but it really needs feed and care, and um, so I'm totally in favor for this. It's important to get the information to the people when they need it, as they want it, and uh, I think this is a long, a long way.
Yeah, thank you, Member Dixon, and um, you know, I I think that this district is is doing a lot of different things. I mean, we've talked about learning, we've talked about a crisis, we've talked about community education. Uh, we are um, communicating across our district and beyond to a variety of audiences that um, need, require, and expect information in many different ways. Some may never read print, some may only read print. Uh, some, you know, look at social media more than others. Others, like parents, need direct communication via text or uh, email or phone call. And I think managing all of that, uh, creating a brand, um, having a central message, um, being able to stay current and stay authentic and um, communicate with all those different audiences uh, really has eclipsed uh, the current staffing plan that we have in place for that. Uh, and we have great staff, but I think we're really looking for uh, additional expertise that um, we don't currently have in the district, uh, that can really help bring this plan uh, to fruition. Any other comments or thoughts? All right, we will continue to the uh, next item, number four, Education Equity Plan, Superintendent Grandseth.
This is another area that I'm really excited about. Way back in February and March, when we began our conversations together, uh, we had a lot of conversations about equity and about diversity and uh, our needs in those areas. And as I talked to people throughout the community, as I came in and and met with community members and students and and parents, we we also talked a lot about diversity and our needs in the area of education equity. And I have been focusing on on some of this work, and this equity plan includes a few different pieces. One is the creation of an equid, an Education Equity Advisory Council. It will be made up of community members from several different organizations and several different backgrounds, and their task will be to help to advise us in our decision-making as we're as we're creating policies, as we're looking at protocols, as we're looking at curriculum. Any, any topic really that we can bring diversity into the conversation um, is going to give us a better decision and a uh, stronger voice for people who have not felt that they've had a voice. And so the creation of this committee is part of this plan. We're also looking at expanding uh, our liaisons. We currently have two liaisons. One that focuses on the Latin community and another on the Somali community, and I think this is an opportunity to to stretch ourselves, and we are going to be adding two additional positions, their their liaison positions, but one of them would be more of a lead role that can do some of the coordination of the work of our liaisons and what we'll call the the Office of Education Equity and the creation of a a cultural center for the district uh, that would house our liaisons and really become a place where students can can learn about their own culture, can learn about other cultures, and serve as a resource to our our staff and our schools and our community as we develop uh, more cultural responsiveness and um, bring more of the diverse culture that surrounds us into our schools uh, on an everyday basis. We know that there are differences when we look at outcomes in our district, both academic and behavioral, and those are areas that uh, we really need to work and focus on in a very purposeful way, and I'm really excited about this work. I'm excited to 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 share a more about this plan, and I look forward to working more closely with the community um, through the Advisory Council and through opportunities created in a in a cultural center. And um, this was also presented to the Personnel Committee as we're we're adding liaison positions um, in that lead position. And um, so if others have more to to add about this, I'd be happy to hear from you.
Superintendent Grandseth, just to, just to add uh, and uh, make everyone aware that this would be funded through the Achievement and Integration Grant sources, so.
Thank you. I I did forget to mention the tie to the Achievement and Integration Program. That is something that um, St. Peter Schools started last year. There are some statutory requirements that go along with this funding. The Equity Advisory Council i- isn't exactly um, prescribed the way that we're creating it, but it will serve to lead the work of the Achievement and Integration Planning and the budgeting piece of that. And um, much of the funding for this program would come through uh, Achievement and Integration.
Thank you. Questions? Again, I'm I'm really excited about this. I think um, you know, these are trajectory-changing projects for the district, and um, I was gonna say it a little bit later, but you know, I just, I commend you, Superintendent Grandseth. I I commend uh, the administrators and staff that are working on this. I mean, we're talking about big uh, big things, complex things, uh, really important things, uh, and you're also dealing with a pandemic at the at the same time. And again, to restate, that policy project is also a beast. So I just want to recognize that uh, while we are very focused on the pandemic and learning models and reacting to state guidance and numbers, we are also continuing the work of of the district and really doing some aspirational things and moving things forward. So, thank you. A facilities update. A facilities update. Mr. Bachman.
The administrative team, Mrs. Engeldinger, Mr. Paula, I was not present. I was having other fun. And Mr. Granseth, uh, met with the city on Thursday to review our agreement with CSP, uh, Community Spirit Park. And as you see in the, um, in the packet, uh, the recommendations for our enhancements for this year, we're gonna focus on getting another set of goals and also improving additional egg lime along the edges of the fences. We addressed all the infields a couple of years ago, but we did not address the edges of the fences. And then also, uh, as we discussed last spring, the restrooms for both the north side and south side of CSP will be going up for bid in January and those projects that will start hopefully start June.
Thank you. Questions, comments? All right, that is the end of our information items. We'll move to reports. And there's Etive.
Right on cue. Um, thank you so much. Tonight, I just want to give a couple of highlights about early childhood. Certainly, we've been moving through distance learning. We have received, um, good feedback from teachers in our switch to the Seesaw platform. We had been using homeroom, um, last year, last spring. We've moved to Seesaw and we're finding that to be, um, much more, well, it's user-friendly first of all, but it's also allowing us to hear students recording their learning and, and different things like that. So that has been a positive change. And again, just, um, my gratitude to all of the early childhood staff and district-wide staff for hanging in there with us, our parents, students and staff for just for hanging in there as we move through this. And we'll get there. Secondly, what I wanted to share is an update regarding food service. As you may recall, last spring, all meals were free for students. We had delivery locations, actually last spring, we had our bus routes delivering meals to students individually each day. In the summer, we moved to drop spots with meal packs. And we continued that as we've moved into distance learning. So just to give you an idea of the number of meals that have been served since school started this year, we've distributed total of 156,851 meals to our students in St. Peter's Schools. About 69,000 of those have been breakfast and 88,000 have been lunch. So again, we've had our locations throughout St. Peter. Families are able to pick up those packs. We do have delivery spots as well. The free food program has been extended through the end of the school year, but we do want to continue to encourage families to fill out those free and reduced applications. We know that our title funding is dependent upon that, our compensatory funding is dependent upon that. And so even though right now those meals are free, we want to be prepared. And so we have been working hard to connect with families who maybe have qualified in the past and haven't yet filled out applications. And then Mr. Overbow is, has the, um, the electronic application on our website now as well. So just encouraging folks to do that. Um, as I said, that meal program will continue through the end of the school year, as we know for now. As students move into hybrid again, into in-person, we'll be making adjustments per site for that to ensure that our students still continue to get those meals. So any questions about that, please let me know. But again, just encourage folks to fill out those applications.
Oh, Doreen, you owe yourself a quarter.
Again, that's probably a 50 cent move. Uh, but one thing that is new since we were together last was we have started to bring in more students for intervention program, which is in the afternoon. We now have about 20 students coming in each day. We have about five students who we identified as having more severe needs. So they are coming in on a daily basis and the others come in either on their off days. So they're synchronous with their teachers one day and then on the off day, they are coming in for that afternoon session. And that really is in, um, in part just to all of the hard work from our special education team along with the LL, Eliana Trimmer and Kari Bly. And I think they all deserve a shout out just because they have put so much in. Erin Hagan, Christina Keenland, Stacy Abel and Julie, Carl Bloom has done some help with it. And I did, I get, and Ryan Drayson. So all of them has just worked really, really hard, putting countless hours, putting that program together. So, um, but I would be wrong if I didn't say we are super excited to have our students coming back. We have been exchanging iPads and just to get a little glimpse of, of them coming into the building as they enter the office. We are excited to welcome our students back and we will be ready for them.
Erin, before you start, could I just, I forgot my shout out to our food service staff and the paraprofessionals who have been helping prepare those 156-plus thousand meals since September. Those folks have been just truly dedicated to making sure that gets done. And I would have felt terrible had I not jumped in to say that. So, thank you.
Well, greetings from North Elementary School, everybody. And I have been trained by Mrs. Elkie on how to unmute myself, so I will not be giving anybody any quarters. Um, and I do want to echo what Etive just said. We've had some extremely flexible staff. Our paraprofessionals, our food service, obviously our teachers totally shifting, adjusting, innovating the way that they teach. Our office staff, I mean, just all the way across the board. People are very flexible and happy to help out in any way, shape or form that they can, whether that's school age care or, um, you know, at North, getting those food packs out in front at the very early hours of the day. So can't say thanks enough to the board as well. These are very challenging conversations, a lot of information coming at you. So I definitely appreciate all your, all your service and our speakers tonight as well. You know, obviously we, you know, we've been virtual now for a number of weeks, but it's very heartwarming to me this week as I saw, I see this week and last week, a number of families stop in our front hallway. We kind of have a impromptu, um, kind of a drop-off area and pickup area in the front hallway by door number one. Um, and you can see anything out there from just gifts going out to kids, gifts coming back into families, families stopping in, picking up watercolors to iPads, to STEM kits. So it's quite the, quite the system of getting instructional materials back and forth home and then back into school that our staff and our families have really collaborated with. So the connection is still there and it's strong. And like Ms. Elkie said, we're, we're really excited to see kids back in the building. You know, our PBS team has done a phenomenal job this year on staying connected, um, keeping kids motivated, engaged. They've done that just recently with a number of videos that they sent out. One was just recently a message, uh, that circulated, um, on, on Twitter and, and YouTube quite a bit that the students have said, um, in, in the hallway at Saints overtime, that they've watched numerous times. And I want to thank that team for putting those together. It could be just like messages, you know, keep it up, hang in there, keep doing a good job. Or it's a Saint Seder video where we showcased a couple of students, uh, fourth grade students, Kalen and Halima, how they successfully kind of set up a distant learning, uh, location in their homes in order for them to be very successful. So it's just a great way to model for all the other students that are distant learning as well. Also want to have a shout out to our fourth grade students. Every year, our fourth grade students get an opportunity to design a yearbook cover. Those are being voted on as we speak by our kindergarten through fourth grade students. I think we had well over 35 covers submitted. We narrow it down to just five and the students are voting on those right now. So good luck to all those students. And also want to shout out to spend a lot of time in fourth grade virtual classrooms this week. About 30 fourth graders taught me what's up with a, um, a famous or a very popular app, I guess, right now called Among Us. So I was in a Google Hangout for a while and I got beat pretty bad by a group of fourth graders on how to play that game. But I, at least I know I'm kind of, I'm savvy with now with the apps that are popular on the kids' plates that they're working. So I just need a little practice and I'll be able to, uh, show the fourth graders who, who's boss with that app.
At the middle school, we continue to work through distance learning with our daily synchronous schedule. Seems to be working fairly well for, for the majority of our students and staff. Um, I'm impressed every single day with the persistence of our students, of our parents, of our community and especially of our teachers. We have breaks starting on Wednesday and this break more than any break in my career. I think staff deserves it. We're gonna get rested up and we're gonna get ready to go to, go back to work on the fourth. A couple of cool things, uh, that student council has brought. We have a thriving student council even during distance learning. Um, a few weeks back, we had a school-wide Kahoot game that was played and we had about 170 students and staff logged in all at the same time. Um, and the competition was students had to, uh, guess who was in the picture. And staff members submitted pictures of themselves from middle school. So just a fun way to connect. Uh, and then most recently, student council put on an ugly sweater contest. So there was a winner from every grade level and, and of staff. So once again, um, thank you for all the hard work, school board, administrators, uh, community, everyone. Truly blessed to be a part of this team and, and really looking forward to, to getting back at it. And hopefully the foreseeable future.
Okay, well, I'm still tuned in here along with my pets. We've made it up, uh, past, long past their bedtime. But like the other, like my colleagues have said, um, obviously I, I need to thank my staff for the crazy hard work that they've been doing since, well, since they started their careers, but especially since March. It's been a long haul and obviously we're all excited to have kids back. None of us, um, none of us went into this, these jobs to, to walk around a fairly empty school building. It's what gives us energy and we can't wait to have them back. That being said, we need to have them back safely. So thank you to our school board for, for making, uh, these tough decisions. At the end of the semester is, is right around the corner. And I just want to encourage parents and students to hang in there. There's still plenty of time, uh, to turn things around if that needs to happen or to keep up the good work, uh, if things are going well for you. Uh, and, and, um, I guess my biggest thank you and proudest moment goes out tonight to those students who spoke. It was the highlight of this evening. All of us here who are educators, I think, are so proud of how eloquent and smart and just delightful they were. So thank you to Eva and Mia from the high school and Ms. Gassman from the middle school, uh, for, for their words tonight. Anytime we can have kids in these school board meetings, it reminds us why we're here. So thank you and have a great winter break. Teachers need to take a break. So kids, remember they're not checking their emails every day, all day long. And, um, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, uh, principals. Superintendent Granseth?
There you go, Doreen, another quarter. She's gonna have a buck before the night's over. All right, um, I know it's been a long meeting, so I will be brief. I just, I want to start with a word of appreciation too. I know that these are trying times for all of us and we are fortunate that we have so many people working to make things better. From St. Peter's staff to community partners, to scientists and medical professionals, all working to improve the situation. And I'm thankful for all of their efforts. You know, one day our students in the future are going to be learning about the decisions that we're making right now, the way that we're approaching things right now. And all of us are playing an important role in creating that history. And I'm glad that I get to be working alongside of all of you as we work to support our students and our staff and our community through these times. And like, uh, Principal Engeldinger said, we are one day away from winter break. And whatever it is that you have planned for this break, I hope that it's filled with things that bring you peace and joy and happiness, but especially good health. So please be safe out there, mask up, wash your hands. Uh, and I know it's especially difficult at this time of year, but avoid those, those gatherings and make sure that we can see this plan to return to school through. It really depends on our health and our decisions every day. So thank you for all that you do and that's all I have.
Thank you, Superintendent Granseth. We'll go around, around the table for board members. John?
Thank you, Chair Leonard. I, one thing that I wish she was still on, but I just want to send a shout out to thank, to thank Jody for advocating for our school district. I mean, the, the decision to allow our middle school and high school to go to hybrid, you know, already at this, at this stage, I know it can change, but, um, she had, she had to work hard to convince and advocate for our district. And so I want to thank her for that. The one other thing I meant to say when I was talking about hybrid plus or whatever you want to call about is the, the next population I'm worried about is, uh, those that may choose distance learning as, as their, uh, uh, learning model, uh, especially at the middle school and high school. I think that, uh, if we can get, connect with them every day, I think that would be great. And then compliment the community for, uh, you know, obviously everybody kept waiting for the Thanksgiving spike and it wasn't there, then I think that's a credit to our community. And I hope we continue that diligence over the Christmas break and compliment my fellow board members and especially Chair Leonard and the eye of the storm, uh, Mr. Granseth for, uh, guiding us through this, this, these tough decisions that need to be made. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, Bill?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the students and the parents that spoke tonight. That was very helpful to hear and I'll second what John just said.
Thank you. Tracy?
Um, well, I had them on my list too, and I just wanted to thank the people who talked, but especially the students. I know when I was in high school, I would not have spoke that eloquently, not even sure I do yet, even as an adult. So they're very impressed. Um, and then I like talking to students and asking them how distance learning is going. And it's always really kind of comforting because there certainly are the kids that are struggling and we all know that. But I think the teachers need to keep in mind, there are some kids that are really doing well with it. And, um, and the creativity they put into like Christmas sweaters and cahoots and all these other things really does engage the kids. And I know it can get frustrating when you're thinking about your kids that aren't engaging, but you are getting some people. And then lastly, I just wanted to clarify that I definitely trust Mr. Granseth and all of his decision-making. That motion was not meant in any way that I don't trust him. So anybody who watches this meeting to the end knows that it was more just us defining our role. And I do think that we were on the same page. I hope so. At least he seemed to think we were. So I just wanted everyone to know that.
Thank you. Vicki?
Um, yeah, I, I think that I'm, I'm really happy about the situation with the kids going back to school. And I really like the idea that, um, following up with John had said, I, I'm worried about some of the kids going back to distant learning and staying in that. But I like that we have the option for kids that don't feel safe at school that can still continue to do the distant learning. I think that that's wonderful that they have that opportunity. And, um, I appreciate all the board members. The insight that you guys have is, is great. It's, it's really interesting listening to the different opinions and things that people have and the community members who spoke out. It was, it was very interesting to hear the different points of view. So I really appreciate that and the students. So, um, with that, I just wish everybody to have a great winter break and enjoy, stay safe.
Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, I think that everybody whose picture can be seen on the screen right now understands the passion that we have in our community and it's very much alive. And, uh, it's very much there. And that bodes well for the future of our schools. And that bodes well for the future of our schools. There's a lot of people that care. And that's good to be around. I could thank everybody again. I think there's not any need. We've been, we've been going down this road for about nine months and it's been a long nine months. So appreciate all the insight from the community, all the insight from the professionals. As John said, Jody, board members, it's just. We'll keep plugging away.
Thank you. Drew.
Yes, thank you to community members, staff members, students. Who've reached out to us directly, conversations, emails. This has been, we've received more feedback on. Around this scenario than any other that I'm aware of. We do appreciate hearing from you. We appreciate all the voices and positions and perspectives. They're all part of this community. We serve the community. So thank you for that. I'm also very appreciative of the communities of Nicklet County and the Sur County and the surrounding counties. About doing the right thing and what is needed to be done to get these, our, our numbers down. And so we can go back to school and so we can open our businesses, open our restaurants and get back to businesses as normal. So thank you for doing that. I feel like we are in Homestretch. I'm hopeful, hopeful. So keep it up. Students and staff, you have a well deserved break coming up here. Please take that time, recharge. High five your moms and dads. Enjoy your pets. That's all the stuff that we've been doing. Hang in there and enjoy your time.
Thank you, Drew. Just to add, thanks to everyone. I think, you know, several board members tonight, including myself. Kind of lamented that we feel like we don't have much of a choice with the state recommendations. But I know that parents and staff and kids out there were, were feeling that. Probably more than us. And so I appreciate everything that they're doing and continue to do and students. Sometimes it's hard, I think. You know, you, you've seen, you've seen some, some life and you've, you've lived some years. But this is something that, you know, none of us have had to deal with in our lifetimes and it's, it's hard for us. And my parents didn't have to deal with this either. My, my grandmother was four during the nineteen eighteen pandemic. So I guess she had to deal with it. But you know, what you're, what you're missing out on with your friends, what you're missing out on in the classroom. I think you are also gaining in perspective. And I think that this honestly has the real opportunity to be your superpower in your life. Because you are learning about resiliency, you are learning about tenacity, you are learning about empathy. You're learning about grace. And I don't want to underestimate the pain that this is causing people. But I think what will make a difference is what we take from this experience. And so I am really optimistic that we have turned the corner and that we can continue to move out of this. But more than that, I think our society is going to be better off for us going through that. And that's especially for students now, when you get to be our age and begin to make decisions. You're gonna make better decisions because you went through this. So thank you very much to everyone. I appreciate all of you. We have a few upcoming meetings. Our organizational meeting is Monday, January fourth, twenty twenty one at six thirty PM. That will be virtual. Our regular school board meeting will follow that. And there is a policy committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January fifth, twenty twenty one at three PM. And then the MSBA Winter Leadership Conference, which we usually look forward to meeting with other school boards from around the state in Minneapolis. Obviously, we're not doing that this year, so we are gonna meet virtually. That is January fourteenth, twenty first and twenty eighth. So board members, if you have questions about that, please reach out to Superintendent Grant Seth and Sarah. I think we're all signed up. I understand that people have commitments and not sure what, how much we can attend. I will say that I will miss the opportunity to have personal conversations with each of you this year. And look forward to resuming that tradition in person in twenty twenty two. But with that, if there's nothing further, I'm sure everyone, principals especially. Would appreciate a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. Hager.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, good. Remember, Cross, I wouldn't want that to die for lack of a second. So.
I do want to give you a shout out for the longest meeting I've ever been on in my eleven years of school board. Congratulations.
I'm just glad you've been on eleven years, so you didn't say cumulatively. We are almost there, but there's just a lot going on. You know, this was, this was a really good meeting, I think, and I appreciate everyone's hanging in there and. Thank you. Thank you all. With that, we have a motion in a second. So, John.
Carlson, aye.
Bill.
Solderland, aye.
Tracy. Vicky.
Hager, aye.
Tim.
Loken, scared, aye.
Drew.
Dixon, aye.
Leonard, aye. Excellent. Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.